But in a lot of similar ways, um, we have the, the same challenges they do. We have the same, you know, uh, re- reporting requirements, the, the same statutory requirements as the other, you know, fifty seven counties in the state. Uh, so that in and of itself brings some challenges for us as a small county. Um, but up there on the screen, I'm not going to read all of these, but I'm going to highlight some of them. The general plan, uh, so this is a significant, significant, significant event. I can't highlight that enough. You know, you, you only do this once every thirty years or so, and it's been actually longer for some aspects of our general plan for the county. And we're doing this, yes, with some consultants, uh, you know, and, and they've got the, a, a big lift that they're doing. Uh, and that is how it is done in every county because you don't have staff that's expert in something that's only done once every thirty years. Um, but also we're doing this, uh, with basically, you know, one planner in our county. And typically it's done with about three to five planners in a county. Um, so it, it is a difficult task. Uh, we're working through it right now. Uh, I'm very grateful for the progress we've made, uh, but we have a lot, uh, of effort left on, on this. And, you know, a lot of time, both from a staff perspective and from a community engagement perspective. Uh, so we're just in the throes of this right now, but that's a significant, significant event. Couple other items up there, you know, in the, um, in the community development, the division arena. Uh, you know, you see the limited density world dwelling ordinance, that was a big deal. Uh, we do have twenty two permits, uh, that are even, that have been issued or in process of some sort. So people are in the county taking advantage of that, you know, so the efforts that was put into that are paying off right now. Uh, so I think that was a, a good, good effort that was put forth by a lot of different people. Um, in the behavioral health arena, you know, the mobile crisis, uh, team is, is out there and, and working and they have been responding. Uh, you know, the, the numbers and specifics there are, are not necessarily what we want to convey in this type of meeting. But the, the fact is that that service is being provided for the residents of Trinity County that are in need of that particular service. Um, code enforcement, we've kind of moved that, uh, refocused that from what I would consider cannabis only, uh, specifically run out of the sheriff's department to more of a whole of county perspective. Uh, it's being run out of the community development department now, and we're not only looking at cannabis, but you know, we're looking at building, we're looking at planning, you know, we're looking at environmental health, all those types of things that involve compliance. Uh, we are in fact, uh, focusing on that. I think that's, that's starting to, to pay dividends. Uh, in the, the HHS arena or, or the next, uh, four, five, six, seven bullets there. Uh, and you know, you can see some numbers up there, uh, but the, the, the real message is there is money coming into the county, uh, from the state that is being spent within the county, uh, and, and that's a, that's a good thing. Uh, we do have lots of various programs that we're running on, on behalf of the state. And we've got a very, very, very professional staff that does that, and they do a very good job with that. The, the, the eye opening part, uh, the, some people might not realize is on the bullet that shows, you know, how much food assistance, health benefits, cash assistance for families within Trinity County. You know, nine thousand one hundred and fourteen, uh, participants. So if you do a little math, I mean, yes, that is, that is, you know, right over half, if you will, uh, of, of the, the population in the county, uh, is receiving some, some size, some type of benefit. Um, so significant in, in a number of different ways. Uh, down to OES, you know, we have a great OES team, uh, within the whole of county. Uh, lots of different partners going on there and, and that I'm very grateful for. Our VSO position, you know, over the last few years, this has really taken off and, and we've done some great things there. You'll see the numbers of claims and, and the, and what that means is that, you know, the numbers of people that are eligible, uh, through the VA Veterans Administration has increased. And again, that money that's there is coming into those individuals, but there's a high percentage of that that is being, you know, then returned back into the county in some form or fashion. Uh, so again, that's, that's another positive, positive aspect. Uh, we have embarked upon some IT upgrades across the county. Uh, we've been tracking it all in this meeting. I've talked a number of different times about the county website that we're in the process of updating. That's on schedule to be done by the end of this calendar year, so calendar year twenty four. That will provide some better interaction for the public, uh, and, and will allow staff some more capabilities to provide information on a platform that should be easi- more easily accessible and navigable. Uh, in the probation arena, you can see a couple of items up there, uh, probation department arena. You can see, uh, really neat thing there is, you know, they've got a, a virtual training platform, uh, that's, that's operational now i- in the facility up there. And, and multiple law enforcement organizations are coming in and can come in and, and use that. So it's not just for the probation department, but they are hosting it and housing it and leading that effort. Uh, and they're doing a great, a great job there. Uh, the next two, three, four are from our DOT department. You know, oftentimes, uh, we hear a lot of, uh, complaints, if you will, about the, the, the level of maintenance our roads get and the issues we have on our roads, and I'm not discounting any of those, those are all legitimate. But the facts are, uh, the, the amount of money that we get in for, for road maintenance in our county compared to the needs. There's a significant gap there, and I believe the DOT department, you know, and the road crews do a great job, uh, with the funds they have. And they've made some significant improvements in our road system, on our county road system, uh, over the, the last year. Uh, we're still continuing to, to work on priorities and conveying the, you know, the, the message, if you will, out to the community. So people understand, you know, where their roads fall, when they can expect maintenance on theirs. Uh, we just had a very productive meeting with the state on, uh, in the, uh, carb arena. So this is the emissions arena, and we were able to re-categorize some of our equipment and increase the available hours that our equipment can work and not be under any type of constraints uh, for the next three years. Uh, so that's going to be a significant win, uh, for Ron and his crews, uh, out there. And that doesn't give us any more crews, but that gives us more availability with the heavy equipment that's needed. So it's, it's one less restriction we'll have, if you will, and that, that is a, a, a big movement in the right direction. It's not solving the problem, but it is positive, positive movement. And, um, we've may had some significant, uh, work already being done on the, the Rusinian Emergency Ri- uh, Road Repair Project. In Penos's last board report, he saw, he sent some pictures out there, uh, and there's been a significant amount of earthwork. It's been done with heavy equipment and we're on track to, to get wrapped up, uh, you know, before the, the wet weather really sets in here. Uh, and that'll be a, a big, big significant improvement, uh, for, uh, Southern Trinity. And then the last item up there is the strategic plan. Uh, I've talked about that in various forums at the last, uh, the normal meeting. I did a, a little update on it, kind of provided where we're at from a platform perspective, and we are continuing to focus on that. I would ask, you know, the community and, uh, staff and the board to keep that focus, keep that product in focus as we all go about making decisions from an operational perspective every day. We have a tendency to glom onto, probably a pretty official term, glom. Uh, probably, you know, focus on, uh, you know, the, the topic of the day, that really emotional, that significant event, that emergency that might come up, and we need to do that, that's important. But we also need to keep in mind, you know, that longer term plan and those priorities that were established and that were approved by this board on the third of January, uh, and that's a five-year plan. Yes, we will make adjustments to that, yes, we'll make progress on that. But as decisions are made, you know, we, we need to, to stay true to that, that plan with the, that we developed and that we collectively agreed to, and, and we will continue to, to focus on that. Um, so again, just some highlights, and I'd like to, you know, I, I, I can't publicly thank staff enough, uh, for the work that they do. And they don't get nearly amount of the credit that they, they should for the, the great work that is done. We often focus on the negative, but there are so many positive things that are going on out there. And, you know, I, I do just thank everybody, all the staff that's in this room and it's online, you know, for the work that they do every day. Uh, and it does not go unseen.
Trent, can you give me just a second? I realized I didn't read this, and I guess to be official and read into the minutes. Um, uh, our item that we are about to dig into is item A, county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request that an item be heard out of order. The item that we are meeting on today, county administrative office, conduct budget hearings to consider the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Recommended expenditures, including contingency, total one hundred and forty-four million, five hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. Thank you. Now please continue and sorry for the interruption.
Nope, that's good. Thanks. We gotta, we gotta stay official. All right.
Suzie, we may need your help.
Might need help. Slide's not forwarding. Now it's not worked once, now it's not. Okay. All right, so how did, how did, how did we get here? What have we done? Uh, like I've, I've said in a, in a couple of different public forums, uh, we started out with about an eight million dollar, a little over eight million dollar gap between what budgets, uh, requested and the available, uh, actual, you know, revenue that we anticipate. So as everybody knows, part of the county budget act, you know, w- we must submit and run off of a balanced budget. Uh, we can't run off of a deficit, so, uh, we had our work cut out for us as we began department level hearings, uh, a few months ago. Uh, we had numerous discussions with every department. Uh, most of them had to happen more than once, and then we went back and had very specific ask from, from different departments. And some of that I will start going over. Um, we, we looked at, you know, those items that we have to mandatorily provide, uh, in accordance with the state constitution and count, and, uh, state code that are out there, uh, versus those discretionary county services. Uh, then we looked at the strategic plan, always keeping that in mind, those five lines of effort that we have and those, uh, fifty-one key results. Part of, part of my focus, uh, as was outlined in the budget introduction memo, was we must stop deficit spending. We have been on a, um, on the wrong trend over a number of years, and that has become the norm, uh, versus the exception. It's okay to deficit spend temporarily if you have a short-term project, if you've got a need, if you've got some significant event that came up and you've got a plan to get yourself out of it. Um, but that is not the mode that we were in, and that is what we are trying to stop now. And that is what the budget that is presented, uh, to you today, um, takes the first steps at trying to curb that deficit spending. Then we looked at the FY twenty-three, twenty-four actuals, uh, you know, those, those expenses that we, uh, actually incurred, uh, last fiscal year. As you recall, last fiscal year, we also made some fairly significant budget cuts. Uh, and in this very room about this same timeframe, some of the same topics were discussed. Um, so, you know, last year's actuals were cut from some of the previous years, uh, but that's, that's, that's the realities we operated in. And then, uh, the next items up there, uh, i- and we'll get into some more, some more of these details as we go through that particular budget unit, uh, under that, that particular department. Um, but the, this proposal has a, a significant, uh, change in, in, in reduction of, of services for the library. Um, under the sheriff's budget, there's some significant proposed cuts, uh, to the sheriff's budget. One that's received a lot of public attention, you know, is the animal shelter right now. Um, and we'll talk about that more under the, the sheriff's sp- specific budget. Um, but, you know, that even though the animal shelter has maybe taken the, the, the public view, uh, you know, we can't lose the fact that there's also some significant cuts in the sheriff department. And I'm confident, uh, the sheriff and his staff are going to outline those to us, and we will have that discussion, uh, at the right time. Uh, also want to highlight, and I'm, I'm sure Ruby and her staff will do this, uh, well, but, you know, there was a significant reduction in the general fund contribution to the probation department. Some may have heard, you know, that I've thrown around this, uh, the figure of seven hundred thousand dollars in different forums. Uh, you see up there four hundred thousand dollars, there's a, there's a, uh, the, the difference there is, is some of the other funding sources that we've asked them to, to take funds from, uh, as we're going about curbing this deficit spending. The DA has also taken some cuts, the clerk recorder assessor elections has taken cuts, the auditor has taken cuts, treasurer tech, tax collector has taken cuts. And we've also, as I outlined in my budget memo, we've increased revenue projections, uh, from various areas. Um, with that comes some risk, and, and we'll talk about that in, in a little bit as far as, uh, what that means uh, when we start talking about the, the contingency and those amounts. Um, then my last bullet up there is, you know, no more one-time Band-Aid fixes. Uh, I'm not going to go into the specific details of each one, but it's outlined in the budget memo as far as what we've done the last five fiscal years, uh, to, to quote, balance the budget. But they are all very poor financial decisions, and I'm confident, uh, you know, ninety-nine percent of the people in this room and probably ninety-nine percent of the people in this county would not make those same personal budget decisions, uh, because they are not, uh, sound financial decisions, nor are they looking not only into the long-term future, but they're not even looking into the short-term future. Uh, so we can't continue to do those because that will not change the realities of our revenues and our expenses. Okay, the next slide, um, so I've also talked about a little bit, you know, the consumer price index. I know it's been quoted in some, in some paper articles. Um, so, you know, I'm not going to explain, you know, the, the definition of the consumer price index. Folks can figure that out and look that up, but here's just the, the data. Uh, the source data here is the US Bureau of Labor Statistics. This is not data that I've made up, uh, this is federal data. Uh, and the, the larger graph there is the overall CPI, uh, you know, for US with a focus on California. You can see, uh, I've just done it in a five-year increment, uh, starting off in two thousand nineteen, so it's at zero and the, and the percent increase is twenty-two point seven percent. If you extend that out to ten years, uh, it jumps up into the thirty range. But I'm just focusing on the five years for each of these charts, and you can see some of the trends. If you look on the, um, on the, the left-hand side of the, the chart on the top there, uh, that's the CPI specifically for housing. Uh, so you can see the housing costs have increased approximately twenty-five percent over the last five years. Now you might ask yourself, well, how does housing directly equate to, uh, the county budget? Well, it, it doesn't equate directly, but when you have over three hundred people that need housing, uh, it does affect it because they've got to pay for housing somehow, uh, if we want good quality workforce, and that comes from salaries. Uh, so as cost increase, uh, you'll see some other subsequent charts here that show other increases that match these. The bottom left there is for gasoline. Uh, you can see some big, big changes there, you know. Fortunately, uh, we have seen a little bit of a, of a downturn in, in twenty-four, which is great. Uh, you know, but we're still up about the thirty-eight percent increase, uh, from two thousand nineteen. I know we can all personally feel this, um, but, you know, we also have a significant fuel bill, uh, for the entire county, uh, as we run county operations. And what you personally feel at the gas pump when you fill up every time, regardless of where you get your gas, we're feeling that same thing, and that's just, again, one of, one of the examples. I'm just trying to show some trends here. Um, so those are the overall larger, uh, trends, you know, U- US and, and California-wide specifically. And the next few slides are going to be specific to the county. Uh, so we've talked about some insurance premiums before, so you can see here our insurance premiums, you know, have gone up, uh, countywide, uh, almost, uh, sixty percent, significant increase. Break that down a little bit, you know, workers' comp for general fund departments only. And we can all, we can break all this data down, but just trying to show some trends here, uh, you know, is up in the, the twenty-five percent range uh, as far as the increase, uh, of our workers' comp only, uh, claims and premiums. So again, all, all increases, uh, not necessarily in the, in a, they're in a direction, but I wouldn't say right or wrong. It's just the facts. Here's some more increases, uh, top left, you can see utilities, uh, you know, again, fortunately, we have seen a little bit of a decrease in, in the twenty-three, twenty-four time period. Uh, hopefully that will at, at least show a little bit more of a decrease or remain in, in a, in a somewhat of a downward trend. But even with that decrease, uh, we're still above thirty percent increase from the nineteen, twenty time period. Maintenance of structures, uh, so this is really our, our, your, what you would equate to facilities maintenance. When a building like this, you know, needs AC repair, when a building like this needs a, a roof, when a building like this, uh, you know, needs some outside maintenance. Anything that goes into maintenance of a, a structure, a, a fixed asset, if you will, uh, that is in this category. And you can see, you know, that the increases there are significant. Um, you know, y- if you talk to any electrician out there, uh, the, the cost of electrical components has absolutely skyrocketed, uh, since COVID, and that's just the realities we operate in. Uh, you know, we, we need, uh, electrical parts, we need HVAC parts. We're working through right now, literally as we speak, a, uh, issue with our IT server room and needing, uh, equipment, component parts, uh, to keep the, the, the HC- HVAC unit cooling the IT room. Um, and, you know, those costs of parts are significant. And then the fuel down there, talked about, you know, fuel US-wide, uh, and then you can see our fuel expenses countywide, you know, and the increase that they've gone up in just the last five-year period. So again, some trends lines that are showing you, uh, why we're talking about the types of, of cuts, uh, today, that are the realities we're operating within. So some other increases, uh, you know, I've, I've often heard since I've been here, uh, and it's, it's kind of been twofold, but we start off that, you know, county employees weren't making enough money, budget, you know, salaries were way off, can't compete. Uh, you know, we, we did an extensive, uh, compaction, uh, and it's called class and comp, so classification and compensation survey. Extensive, lots of rules were followed in accordance with the state, you know, very much professionals brought in to help us do that. Staff worked with it, uh, and the, the right people looked at it and analyzed it, went through lots and lots of efforts. Uh, and, and last year, the fruits of that were implemented. And, and the vast majority of county staff did see a, a increase in their salaries, and that's what you're seeing there from twenty-one to twenty-three, twenty-four, that time period, you're seeing that increase. That was abs- in my opinion, that was absolutely appropriate, and we are now more competitive with our surrounding counties. Uh, we are doing better. We are not where we need to be, in my opinion, uh, but we are, we are in much firmer grounds than we were three years ago. And oftentimes people compare us, uh, to similar light counties, you know. There's, there's kind of five or six light counties, if you will, Plumas, Modoc, Sierra, us, uh, Inyo, Mariposa. You know, and, and if you look at a population size, uh, those are very comparable counties. That, that's a, that's a legitimate comparison when you're looking at, at certain services that are being provided. But when you're looking at recruiting personnel to fulfill, to fulfill staff responsibilities, I don't compete with Inyo County. I don't compete with Modoc County. I don't compete with Plumas County. I compete with Shasta County, with Tahama County to a degree, with Siskiyou County, with Humboldt County. So those are the types of counties from a salary perspective, uh, that we need to be comparing ourselves against and what that class and comp study did in fact do. I've also recently heard about, you know, well, the, the, the department heads, uh, and the CEO position, you, there's way too much money, make too much money. Oh, okay, uh, that's a, that's a legitimate, uh, comment, um, but I think it's inaccurate, uh, when you look at a true comparison to other counties. I have compared, you know, this position's, uh, salary and benefits package to those, those five light counties that I talked about from a, from a, uh, size perspective. The thing that people don't realize and they don't want to talk about is, uh, this county has a CAO. There is no deputy, there is no assistant, there's very little admin staff. When you compare to Inyo County, they've got an deputy, they've got an assistant, they've got, uh, three other, um, analysts in their front office. Uh, so they're running with six, we're running with three, uh, and of those three, you know, we are really, uh, we've got some very competent and capable people and very good staff. Um, but the, those positions and those salaries of those positions are significantly less than you compare to other counties. Uh, and then, then you just kind of spread that out to other departments, uh, and most of our departments, you know, are running pretty lean staffs, where we don't have a big depth bench of assistants, of deputies, of, you know, people that are in those positions that we're trying to, you know, provide them some experience and, and leadership opportunities to fulfill those department head positions at some time. So it's, it's a little difficult to pr- to provide and to create some good succession planning and, and good personnel management, you know, when we don't have some of those benches. Um, but again, those are just the realities we operate in. I'm not saying that, you know, we need to change any of that or that that is, uh, necessarily a, a, a focus item that I want to put on the table. But I do want to address the, the, the topic and make people understand that. I love it when people go out and do comparisons to other counties and provide us some information back. That's, that's great. Um, but I ask people to also compare apples to apples and really dive into the details a little bit more and find out, you know, from the, the sources where you're getting information, make sure we're comparing, uh, like services and like organizations, uh, as we look at that. So, uh, the, the other item that's up there on the screen is, you know, general fund specific salaries, uh, versus regular salaries. So regular salaries on the left is all the entire county, which includes general fund departments and non-general fund departments. And then on the right there, you just see general fund salaries. Uh, and there is a difference, uh, you know, uh, the general fund salaries have not gone up as much as overall county salaries. That does create some challenges with us when we talk, when we talk amongst our five, uh, bargaining units. And that does create some challenges amongst, um, the, the recruiting and the filling of positions, uh, between all the county departments. Uh, so again, it's just, it's just a, a fact, it's not a complaint, it's not, uh, any, anything other than it's just factual information. And then the PERS UAL down there in the bottom, uh, that's another increase, uh, you know, that's our liability that we have out there. Uh, and, uh, you know, oftentimes people don't really get overly excited about that, uh, in, unless they really understand what it entails and/or maybe personally, uh, affected by it. So I'm, I'm confident, you know, the, the three hundred or so plus retirees that we have out there, uh, are aware of this. And then, you know, those county employees that are looking to become retirees at some point in time are also understand this, uh, because it is, it is important. But I do think the solvency of our, uh, you know, pension, if you will, CalPERS is very solid. Uh, the solvency of our benefits, uh, in the county are, are solid, uh, for people to understand that. Uh, the solvency of our benefits uh, in the county are, are solid uh, for people to understand that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Craig, who is going to go into some more details um, about the, the county budget and some of the, the, the specific comparisons. Uh, a lot more of the numbers uh, from a very, um, very much more detailed perspective. So Craig, over to you.
Test, test. Thank you, Trent. Uh, Craig Goodman, fiscal consultant to the county. Um, I, I asked uh, Suzie, to keep the slide up here, because I wanted to touch a little bit on the PERS U A L before I get into the budget. Some of the things that impact the local budget are out of the control of the local county. One of those is, and an example of one of those is decisions made by the state Cal PERS board. And I just want to go over a change that they made. They passed the policy back in twenty fifteen that was postponed until twenty twenty-one. But it was a uh, funding risk mitigation policy to try to stabilize PERS rates to local governments and to schools. And one of the things that they're attempting to do is if they exceed their investment returns estimate, depending on how far above that return they get, they ratchet down the discount rate. I apologize in advance, it's going to get a little detail, a little technical, but the discount rate sets how much your total liability is. So the more it goes down, your liability goes up. If your total liability goes up and the amount of set aside money that you've put in as your fiduciary net assets, what you've contributed over the years and the earnings that it's made over the years, that doesn't change except by their investments. So if the liability suddenly goes up, you have a bigger gap or a bigger liability that you haven't funded. That then forces that U A L number up. Okay? The first year that, and I, I apologize, Trent, but I'm not sure how the data works on yours. But the first year that they actually exceeded this after starting in twenty twenty-one was twenty twenty-one. And it dropped the discount rate point two, about twenty basis point, point two of a percent. So it went from seven percent down to six point eight. Those of you that have been following the budget over the years also know that it used to be at seven point five, the discount rate for Cal PERS. And they had a three-year plan to reduce it by an eighth, an eighth and a quarter to get down to seven percent. That happened, we endured that, we were able to plan for that. Um, but this six point eight hit everybody at local government and schools hard. And I think the backlash to Cal PERS was heard by the board. Because they since have changed in April of twenty twenty-four. They still have the policy in place, but it's not an automatic trigger. It has to go back to their board to be voted upon on whether they're going to lower that discount rate. So it does give an opportunity to local government, the schools employees to go to those board meetings and, you know, make their, make their plea on whether it should ratchet down. The benefit of that discount rate coming down is that it would help to stabilize your PERS rates over time. That's, that's why Cal PERS is looking at doing that. So although it's a good purpose, it's very rough on local budgets. Because that point two zero, you're, let me see, you're um, your U A L payments for this year, no, for last year, for twenty-three? No, this year, for the four-five budget, six point eight million across your bargaining units. That payment gets made in July in cash. The reason we pay it in cash in July is because we get a discount on the total amount that we have to pay and it saves money and keeps it here locally for the budget. So that's just one of the outside sources, not counting about cuts at state budget level, impacts to various programs across the county. Those are things that we're also trying to field when we put this budget together. And um, this year in particular has been very difficult. Uh, one of those reasons is because we aren't band-aiding it. We don't have any Band-Aids left in the box. So we're having to move forward with this. And I will go into my presentation, which is not as, it's not really detailed, Trent, it's more of a thirty thousand foot flyby. But it gives you trending compared to what uh, Trent was showing you that is, is impacting at the federal level and the state level and also the local level. The details of the budget will actually, we can get into those when the department heads come up. We can really do a deep dive if that's the desire. All right, so the fiscal year uh, twenty-four, twenty-five budget, uh, we'll go to the next slide. The total budget that we're presenting to you as a recommended budget is a hundred forty-four million, five hundred and ten thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars. It's actually a four point six percent decrease from twenty-three, twenty-four. The debt service payments that are due in twenty-four, twenty-five are fully funded in this budget. And about one-third of the total budget is for salaries and benefits. Here you see a total expenditure budget broke out by function within the county. You'll see that it's pretty evenly divided between public assistance, health sanitation, public ways and facilities, public protection and general government. Those are the main functions that we provide. Uh, your public ways and facilities all, obviously is airports and roads. Um, health and sanitation are all the various health services, sanitation services that are provided as well as public assistance. Not a big change here other than the general fund contributions to others, that's six point four five includes the, the transfer that we have made to the sheriff's fund uh, back in twenty-two, twenty-three, and I may say this a couple of times. Back in twenty-two, twenty-three, we created a separate fund for the sheriff budget units. Um, it's a, we, we consider it a second general fund, so you're going to start seeing here in a little bit two sets of pie charts when we talk about general fund, one without the sheriff fund included and the second one with the sheriff fund included. And eventually we'll split them apart completely and just do general fund and sheriff fund, but we don't have five years of data yet for that. Next slide. So the major budget components of the total budget, you have eleven point five million for road and airport projects. Uh, thirty-four point four million for transfers. And at the point that I talk about transfers, I always stop and let you know that transfers simply means that we're moving cash from one fund within the county treasury to another fund within the county treasury. Why would that occur? Well, when the general fund has discretionary money that they're going to send out, uh, for instance, to the sheriff's fund, which is now separate from the general fund, we do a transfer out to move the cash. We have to have appropriation authority for our auditor to actually move the money. So thirty-four point four million is transfers of cash within the county funds. Forty-eight point three million of the hundred and forty-four million budget is for salaries and benefits. When you break it down to the general fund budget, forty-two point one percent or eleven million, eleven point five million, it hits the general fund as salaries and benefits. For the non-general fund, it's thirty-six point eight million, which is thirty-one point four percent of their total budgets. Fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we continue to fully fund the, the hundred percent of A D C for O P E B, our other post-employment benefits other than pension. The unfunded liability, um, as of June thirty, twenty twenty-three, which is an un-audited number, the audit is in process to be completed currently, is thirty-nine point eight million. The second bullet shows the par trust, which is our, our fiduciary assets, what we've contributed towards that liability. So in June thirty, twenty-two, our balance was twelve million, four ninety-one, four fifty-one. The reason I use that there is because the, um, the number under the first bullet is based on a measurement date one year before. So if you were to take the amount of our PERS trust for twenty-two of twelve point five million and add it to the thirty-nine point eight million above, that's our total O P E B liability number based on a six percent discount rate. Since then, we have contributed both the A D C and we started to contribute money from the I S F O P E B that we had accumulated back in previous years and have submitted those. We have a plan of submitting those to the, the parse trust to get the benefit of reducing that liability. So you'll see in June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, seventeen point eight million. And then June thirty, twenty twenty-four, twenty-one point five million. So we are, we are headed in the right direction on being able to fund our O P E B liability. Um, our pension uh, liability is in a similar uh, place. The current balance as of June thirty, twenty twenty-four, that's an audited balance, obviously, five point seven million. Um, and we're in a good position with our O P E B and we need to continue to forge ahead with that. The major budget components, as we talked of earlier, we start at the one forty-four point five. We reduce the transfers, which is just movement of cash within by thirty-four point four. That gets us down to a hundred and ten point one, and then we back out the major road and airport projects of eleven point five, which leaves us ninety-eight point six million uh, for the rest of county operations. Now, in that ninety-eight point six million, there's also inter-fund work that's done between the departments, so not all of that actually leaves the county. All right, so general fund revenue, this is without the sheriff's fund, this is just general fund. We have twenty-five million, two hundred and fifty thousand, eight forty-three in revenue. You can see that easily the largest portion is taxes, fit, almost fifty-two percent. Another large area is the charges for current services. Included in this is the inter-fund um, work that's done between departments as well. So your, your cost plan um, revenues are in here. Um, things such as that. Inter-governmental revenues are uh, nine point seven seven percent. Those are usually your federal and state and other government revenues that come into the county. Those are generally going to be lower for general fund because they don't like to fund your general government. They only want to fund earmark, special purpose um, type to programs. All right, now with the sheriff fund, um, our general fund revenue is twenty-eight million, seven seventy-two, three twenty-five. It, it seems like it was a very small change there, right? But in reality, what we're doing is from the general fund, we have to transfer out money to the, the sheriff to cover their county costs because they're no longer part of the, an original general fund. So we're, we have to back that out when we combine the two, because we have, we'd count double revenue if we didn't, okay? So you'll see the taxes go down a little bit in percentage of that twenty-eight, and the reason for that is that the sheriff's not getting any taxes directly. They're getting additional transfers in, you'll see that number has drastically increased. That's coming from special revenue funds that the sheriff receives from the state or the federal government that sit in another fund that get moved in to reimburse those expenses that qualify for those types of uh, uses. All right, charges for services are pretty consistent. You see the inter-governmental revenues number is up, that's also for that same type of thing. The, the sheriff's office, the jail, um, any of his departments are sometimes eligible for federal and state monies that would go directly to them and not through the general fund. All right, so the trending, remember that I said, and I put a little note down here at the bottom, that in twenty-two, twenty-three, we split the sheriff into their own fund for transparency purposes, so everybody can see all of the money that goes where it goes, all that stuff. Doesn't get lost in the general fund that has many, many, many budget units. But with that, you see it, it looks like they jump in revenue, but as we showed just in those last two slides, the difference that, in that jump is mainly from the direct state and federal monies they receive and the additional transfers in that come in. Those are all considered revenues in this chart. All right, this is the important one. So this is the chart that shows discretionary versus non-discretionary revenue in the general fund, and that's, this is with the sheriff. Okay, so the they tell me I'm colorblind, so I apologize, but is that a more the red, not the pink? Um, the bottom colored uh, is your discretionary revenue. And so let's look at the trend. And then you've heard me over the years talk about this discretionary revenue has been very flat. If you look at this, you kind of go, well, it's going up a little bit. Well, there's reasons for that, and I put those notes down below. Some of those Band-Aids tend to inflate that discretionary revenue number. Um, and you can see that uh, in twenty-two, twenty-three, there was a one million dollar Band-Aid. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we had two hundred and seventy-eight thousand higher. It was due to federal disaster monies that came in and a one-time federal grant. In twenty-four, twenty-five, the discretionary uh, one point two million was higher. It was due to the building use allowance that now goes through the cost plan. Um, so it's one point two million in revenue that's not cash. If you will, there's, you're going to see it later and I'll point it out. There's a higher expenditure hitting the public protection in one point two million. And the revenue goes in to the general fund at one point two million, but it's not cash. It's there because if it doesn't hit the sheriff's budget, when they go to bill their federal and state grants, they wouldn't be able to recover any portion of that. This way, they're at least allowed to cover a portion of that. All right, the property tax apportionment. I, I looked this slide up this year and I'm glad I did because it changed slightly. The county went from thirty-two percent to thirty-three percent of each dollar of property tax that comes in, comes into the county. Four percent goes to the special districts and sixty-three cents of every dollar goes to the schools. So general fund expenditure budget, this is twenty-seven million, uh, twenty-seven point two million basically. And, and you'll see the effects um, of slowly increasing discretionary revenue, which I think was the last bullet I didn't cover on there. Your property tax monies across the board with supplementals, delinquencies, current secured, all of those combined is growing year to year between one point five percent and three percent. And so I would just point that out when the, if you looked at the charts that, that Trent showed on the expenditure side that are going forty and fifty percent, but your revenues are three percent growth. So that's kind of what's creating this difficulty in budgeting. And we're really, in the general fund, we're not able to really spend outside of public protection and general government. So many of the other functions that you saw in the earlier first slide of health and sanitation, your facilities, your roads and airport and your public assistance, that's all being funded by federal and state dollar with very minimal um, general fund contribution. This is showing with the sheriff, so you, you still see that the two major components are public protection and general government and the squeeze happens everywhere else. All right, so those contributions that go out of the general fund total at the bottom, nine point three million, nine point four million. And you can see that eight point three million goes to the jail, to fund the jail, the sheriff, the code enforcement and the coroner. I'll just point out, the only reason that you see that number in this slide and you've only seen it since twenty-two, twenty-three is because of that separation of the fund, so that we send that contribution to the sheriff fund for operations. If they were still in the general fund, you would only see the, the, the non-yellow items as contributions out of the general fund because they would still be in the general fund. Okay, so it becomes more visible to everybody.
Wait a second. So you see code enforcement there too. I previously stated that, you know, code enforcement's transitioning out of the sheriff's office. We still have a small portion, fifty thousand dollars. Um, that we have, as, is, there's an M O U, it's either pending or pretty much done. But there, there is an acknowledgement that for some code enforcement activities, uh, we will need a law enforcement officer to accompany, to accompany uh, the, the other code enforcement staff uh, that will be going out, whether that's in building, whether that's in canvas, whether that's in environmental health, there, there is some acknowledgement of that. And this is also going to be on here, uh, not only this year, but it'll be on there for next year. Irregardless of that amount I just talked about is because there's a two-year lag, if you will, in paying for the benefits side of the employees that were currently, that were previously doing this in the sheriff's office. So we still have an expense associated with quote, code enforcement in the sheriff's office, irregardless of how much work a deputy does or doesn't do, uh, not only for this year, but for the next year, you'll also see that there.
So looking at the other items, no, stay on the back there. So uh, just wanted to cover that the amount of the debt service that's directly covered by the general fund is the three hundred and seventeen thousand. Both that two hundred and ninety two, six sixty two is a health realignment match that we're required as the general fund to contribute in order for health realignment monies to come from the state. The total health realignment monies is much larger than our match dollar here. So it's important that we continue make that match payment. And also, if you look at the bottom, you see a mental health realignment match of fifty nine, five thousand nine twenty four. That also brings in a lot more realignment money than than that, much more. The other items in here, the boat taxes for Lake Patrol is something that is collected in the general fund, but it's, it's specific for Lake Patrol purposes, so it's a transfer out of the general fund and into that specific fund. Most of these other items are covering indirect costs or things that grants do not cover. But we still benefit in that the the grant brings in enough to benefit the county as a whole, and it's worth the investment of covering the other shortfalls, the matches and the indirect costs. If we break this down by function, you can see that ninety two percent of the general fund contributions are covering public protection. Now, public protection, just to clarify, is not only the sheriff and the jail. There are many, many, many departments and those are listed in the budget book. I'll let you take a look at those, but it's much more than just the sheriff and their departments. Health and sanitation is about three point two percent. That service, and those are matches, those are required matches to get the realignment. And then debt services only three point four percent and public assistance, one point six percent. All right, general fund expenditures with the sheriff fund. So we'll see, we see there that the the total is the thirty million, seven twenty sixty one. I just point out here again that that number is inflated by one point two million indirect cost for the new jail, the building use allowance. So that's a non-cash transaction, but it shows up in our general fund expenditures. So that takes that number down to about twenty nine, five, if I remember it. All right, this is just another way of seeing that previous chart, there's this one, and I think there's one more that does the same thing. You can go ahead. This is the one that the the red, I'm pretty sure that's red. The red is public protection, the blue is general government. And so you can see that there's a general trending up of the red. That, that's due to a lot of things, but the big bump in that last year, once again, is that one point two million hit that they're getting from the indirect cost on the jail. But most of this is salaries, the the inflation of expenses that we saw before that are continuing to go up. And we have a requirement on our jail to staff that at certain levels. If we don't, there are severe penalties and we can't afford to incur those penalties as it would create major league cuts in this county. All right, so discretionary budget, just to clarify this one. So you have money that hits our discretionary budget unit, which is budget unit one thousand is fifteen point five million, if you will. There's a one point nine million use of cash carry forward, so fund balance that was not spent last year that we have that we're rolling forward into this number, less the five hundred and eighty thousand for contingency appropriation setup. So that leaves us the sixteen million, eight sixty five, six ninety three of discretionary money here, and it's going to these functional areas. And you can see those there, the public protection, which once again is more than just the sheriff, is seventy two percent of the total budget. So this, although that percentage is higher, if you look, if you know the state budget, the state's budget for education has to be over fifty percent of the state budget by law. So that's the big funding area for the state. Public protection is a big funding area for local government. All right, so here on the left is Pac-Man. The, the red portion of Pac-Man is the non-general fund budget. It's about a hundred and five point four million. And general fund with the sheriff budget here, you'll see thirty nine million. So somebody should be going, you got a mistake because it's only thirty million on your other. Well, that's because this doesn't eliminate the double up, right? Otherwise, we don't get to the total. Remember, because the transfers that thirty four point four million eliminates? Well, if we eliminate it here, we're not matching what we have earlier, so that's why this says thirty nine. Over on the right, the sphere on the right, we'll break out how we're funding the general fund budgets. You got the fifteen point five million of discretionary revenue. You have twenty one point six million of non-discretionary and the cash carryover balance up above a one point nine million. All right, probably one of the only good news areas of this budget is your debt services, okay? The, we have Umpqua Bank, which is the refunding of the two thousand and five COPs back from when the hospital became its own district. Motorola CAD Dispatch System and Day Wireless Radio Lease. Total payments for our debt service equals six twenty nine, eight hundred and thirty, and they're fully funded in this budget. So why is that good news? Next slide. The good news is if you look towards the bottom of this, you can see outstanding balance is only four hundred and thirty seven, nine twenty, principal four twenty five. Our annual payment is same as the outstanding balance. That means we're paying it off this year, so that's good. We're finally paying off from the hospital reissuance of this debt to sever the hospital from the county and set them up as their own. Next one. Motorola CAD also, our last payment, hundred and forty thousand, three oh eight. That's going to happen in March of this year. So both of our major debt issuances are are being paid off current year. Day Wireless, the balance is a hundred thousand, we're paying half of that, which means it'll pay off in the five, six budget. Those are our three separate areas of debt other than PERS and OPEB. And so your debt issuance will be pretty much finished. I believe there's one of these, I think it was the CAD system that is probably going to have some upgrades that we pushed off of four, five because we just didn't have the number, the the amount. But we're planning on putting that in the five, six budget.
Correct, and I want to clarify what Craig was talking about with the hospital debt. So people don't walk away from this thinking all of the hospital debt is in fact paid off. This portion that Craig talked about was the amount that we have been paying off for what, what I would put in 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 conventional terms is more like a loan that that we took out for the hospital debt. The county is still carrying, as I outlined in my budget memo, seven point seven million dollars of of debt not associated with the debt that Craig just talked about. So I want to be clear that, yes, it's a positive thing that we are about to pay off that aspect of it, but we still have a big bill associated with quote the hospital debt. At a, at a future time and meeting, we will bring back to the board a specific plan to basically continue allocating that same amount of of money towards hospital debt, but it'll be going towards a different debt versus the debt you just saw right there associated with Umpqua Bank. If we keep that same amount of payments going towards the hospital debt that you just saw in those previous slides, we can develop a more reasonable payoff plan that involves, you know, a, a decade and a half or so, less than two decades, put it that way, versus, you know, the, the five or six decades if we just kept paying the hundred and fifty thousand that we're paying right now on that. So again, we can dive into that as much as anybody wants to during this forum. I I would, I would suggest we, we not do that, but look into it at, at a, at a different time and a different forum after we've had this paid off and as we develop that going for next year's budget, that we are all, that we're following the, you know, direction and the guidance from the board on that. But that, I just want that clarification that we're, we're not out of the woods yet on our hospital debt.
Testing, and I would just clarify, this is Craig Goodman again. I just clarified that the debt that Trent is referencing isn't an official debt instrument. What it is, is a cash overspend from the hospital back in oh five. It's, it's also found in the financial statements in a note, and you'll see it throughout that document for the county. It's currently seven point seven million cash shortfall in that old hospital fund that gets merged into the general fund for purposes of financial reporting. So that's what he's addressing and paying over the next two decades. If we can take some of the money that we've been using on this debt payment and put it towards that cash shortfall in the hospital and finally eliminate that anvil around the county's neck. Meaning the cash shortfall, not the hospital.
All right, Susie, if you want to bring back up those slides, we're almost done with the introduction. It's all right, it's a little bit lengthy, but go ahead.
I forgot to mention is, if you haven't read the budget memo that he talks about, I think it's called the Letter of Transmittal. It is wonderful on the history of what we've been going through over the last six, seven years. On, it'll get you up to speed real quick if you're new. And I would give you a lot of credit for this, this is very well put together.
The, the next slide that we have up here, you'll see, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. So the, this proposed budget was released to the public on the sixth of September. Since then, I do want to acknowledge that we have received an actual proposal from the library. And I, I thank the friends of the library and everybody associated with that for all the hard work that went into that and the thought process that went into that. We, we have that, we can talk a little bit more of those details when we, when we go through the actual library budget that's under the the CAO section here in a few minutes. And then also with the animal shelter, there's been lots of discussion. When I put these slides together, we had not seen a proposal. I understand Christine and Tasso will bring forth a proposal today when we talk about the animal shelter within the sheriff's budget, so that should be forthcoming. And then if you go to the next slide. So some people might be asking, well, you know, with, with the, all the discuss of flat revenues, you know, what are, what are you going to do as the, you know, county budget officer lead as the CAO? Well, we've had lots of discussions. There's been some public meetings, there's been discussions in here, there's, there was an ad hoc that was created and that report out was at the last Board of Supervisors meeting. And that particular ad hoc did its job and course and has been stood down, if you will. But up there are a few of the potentials that were talked about. And we as a, as a staff and as a community need to continue these discussions and develop a specific plan and make some decisions as far as what area we will in fact pursue. We can't and shouldn't do all of them. But we need to do some down selects, we need to do some more strategy discussions, and we need to make some decisions. All that will be after this proposed budget is presented and ultimately adopted. But we, once we have the budget adopted, we can't just stop the discussions. We can't just stop and then assume things are going to get all better and then we're back at the same place next year. Because I've also, I've also heard that a lot in the last six weeks or so is, well, why is this such a surprise? Why now? Well, if you go back and look at, like I'd outlined in the budget memo, this is not new. If you listen to these in fact budget hearings, Craig, who has made numerous statements about revenues to include the fact that last year he just stopped making the suggestions in the presentation because nothing was ever done with them. So the previous six or seven years to that, the same statements were made in this very meeting. And the, the trend has been, these Band-Aid fixes have been put in place, the budget's adopted, and then it's just crickets for the next eleven and a half months. And we, we can't continue that, we can't continue to do that. I'm not saying all of these, I'm not saying any one of those is the fix. Those are just items that have been brought forth, concepts, ideas that have been brought forth. There's pros and cons to each of them. There are costs associated with each of them, there's timing associated with each of them. And we collectively, and it's the ultimate decision of the board, will need to decide upon what one or number that we will, that we will in fact try to use to increase our revenues. There are some other things that the internal county, you know, staff is going to continue to pursue. But those are all associated with the, with the state and and have different, different implications. There's no, you know, magic wand that we're going to be able to, to raise or or create and, and get more money from the state. But we will, we will in fact try everything we can do within our, within our power. I've also heard, you know, people mention, well, why don't you, why don't you just go out and write grants? Well, we, we do go out and do some targeted grant writing. And I've also, also heard that, well, the county fired the grants writer. Well, that's not a true statement. The facts are, we've never had a quote just general grant writer. The grant writer, the grant department that we have had here has been very housing centric, housing focused. And we do have some, some grants associated with that. We're also carrying some, some debt, if you will, in that grant department from those previous actions to the tune of, you know, multiple six figures, if you will, as far as the, the cost that the county incurred because of those grant actions. Those costs are associated with the administrative cost and time that takes to administer those grants. So it's not just as easy to say, oh, just go write grants. Then that, that grant writer who did in fact leave the county about fifteen, fifteen months or so ago, left on her own accord, the, the county did not defund or dissolve that position. However, when that individual did leave, we did not rehire that position. And we did make some organizational changes after that. And the, the housing aspect that that individual did run has been absorbed within HHS. And because it dovetails in with a lot of other services that HHS provides, and we've been able to create some efficiencies with what that position was doing because it, it, it offers a level of services to the, to a very similar clientele base. And we've been able to realize some efficiencies there. So I just want that clear for the board and for the public as far as, you know, our previous quote grant writer that we had and what that position really did and didn't do. And then grants in general moving forward, they are, they are an option, and they could be up on this list as an option. But they are not the, the, the savior for our budget woes. Many counties out there call grants the county death by a thousand grants. And it's just a slow articulation of the state taking funding from us and then making us write grants for that same funding, but requiring us to do the same level of services or expecting us to do the same level of services. But we're having to write a competitive grant for that. We have written some grants, we've been successful. We teamed up with some partners, we've teamed up with TCOE, we've teamed up with some other organizations, and we've written grants and we have been successful. We've also spent some time on grants, and we've not been successful. We teamed up with RCRC on a couple of counties and we did, did a grant with them, we weren't successful. We, we did a few individual ones and we've not been successful. So you've got to be careful when we just say grants can solve a budgetary issue. They may be part of a, a multifaceted plan to solve our budgetary and revenue challenges, but they are not, in my opinion, in and of themselves, the, the sole source of future revenue. But that can also be for a future discussion. And with that, if this budget is adopted or some form thereof, it does, it, it does create some personnel layoffs, if you will, some personnel transitions. Some things that we have already initiated and that are just coming to fruition, uh, literally this week. Is the golden handshake through CalPERS. This is a process that allows for a different timing towards. Retirement for certain individuals who meet certain requirements, I'm not going to go into all of them here. Our H R department has been working this exclusively, uh, and extensively with CalPERS. Uh, there's an actuarial, there's lots of finances involved with it, there's some H R policy that's involved with it. Um, but the bottom line is, it is going to be quote available, um, uh, for certain individuals. Who may be willing to, to take the golden handshake. And, and basically that allows, yeah, within a two-year period, if there, if somebody within it, within it. Is within a two-year period of quote, normal retirement and they meet certain age qualifications based upon what bargaining unit they're in. They could be eligible to retire potentially two years earlier than they had planned, there's financial implications with each of those. So every individual will have to go in and see if it's right for them, though there will be a application and an, uh, uh, open. Period where they can apply for, and then they have to retire within that period of time. Uh, and we will work through all that, we are currently working through all that, H R has a frequently asked questions that they've developed. We circulated amongst, uh, department heads and, uh, pending the, the proposal. Proposed budget adoption by the board, uh, we will release that and we will engage with those specific. Uh, employees who are affected and who could be, uh, who could take advantage of that program, uh, we will work the details of that. Just wanted to let the board know that as well. And I think that is the last slide, and I do want to remind folks, you know, that we all seem, uh, you know, you've seen this before, uh. You know, I don't want this to be all doom and gloom, uh, it's just realities and we will get through this, we will work through this, uh. You know, I do believe that there is a, a light at the end of the tunnel, uh, sometimes, and no, it's not a train coming at us at five hundred miles an hour. Um, you know, there is a light at the end of the tunnel, sometimes we've got to go through some hardships, we've got to go through some change, uh, to, to realize. Uh, what could be next for us, uh, but I do believe that is on the horizon. So with that, uh, Chair, is what I propose is, uh, now we go into the specific department. Uh, one, we can obviously take questions, uh, from the board as, as you desire. Um, but we will go into the actual budget detailed department discussions, we'll go department by department. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's Susie's alphabetical order, uh, and we will, we will run that, uh, as, as we go through. Uh, we will start with A and we end with T, uh, but, uh, there's, there's, it's, it's not quite a hundred percent alphabetical. But we'll, we're close.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I think that sounds great, uh, suggests that we take a ten-minute break. And, uh, everybody can have their refreshment break and then we can come back in and jump into that, thank you.
When we jump in, when we dive into the.
Thank you, everyone. We are back in session and we will begin with Susie's alphabet, I can't, can't wait to learn it.
All right, Chair, we are going to begin with, uh, Ag Department and Angela's here, we're going to have the, if, if, uh, the. Department heads would rather ask them to come sit here versus a podium, they'll go through, uh, kind of do a budget introduction. Uh, they'll, uh, tell you anything that they want to tell you from a department head perspective. Then we can open up, do the public comment, the board comments, and then move on from there.
Perfect, thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Board members, my name is Angela Blanchard, I am the Agricultural Commissioner and Stiller. I've always been mindful of the county's budget and this year is no exception. We were asked to make reductions in our budget and I believe this budget reflects that commitment. In our proposed budget, you will notice a reduction in salaries and benefits due to the retirement of our prior commissioner. Additionally, I have made cuts in services and supplies, including communication, travel, office expense and professional and specialized services. I'd also like to highlight some key accomplishments from the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. We purchased a weight truck that will enhance our ability to test commercial heavyweight, commercial scales. We also hired an agricultural biologist, weights and measures inspector. And also certified our test standards to ensure the accuracy of our inspections on weighing and measuring devices. Thank you for your time, I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Uh, does the board have any questions regarding this portion of the budget? Okay, yes.
I had the opportunity to go to the office just the other day and I, I, I recall you mentioning, you know, you reducing. Somebody for travel and going only to those things that are priority that you are there in person. And, um, I also know that they getting the, the weight truck, it seems like a huge chunk. But it also allows us to really provide those services that are necessary, so I, I'm grateful that you keep your eye on that. And then you also make choices that are going to create higher productivity in the department, so thank you.
All right, we'll open this to public comment. None in the room, any online?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. All yours.
All right, well, good morning, I am Christine Gaffney, your Auditor Controller, oh. Is that, that better?
Yes, thanks.
All right, well, good morning, Christine Gaffney, Auditor Controller. Um, today I wanted to share some important insights about. The Auditor Controller's Office and the challenges we face when budget is cut and positions in our office are not filled. My predecessor, who dedicated thirty-three years of, um, to this office, informed me that. A fully staffed auditor's office would consist of nine full-time employees, positions. Including the Auditor Controller. However, for the last fourteen and a half years that I have been with the office, we have been operating with just six full-time staff. And a contracted consultant to help us at your end. In the last nine months, that number has dwindled to five, including myself as the Auditor Controller. The situation isn't sustainable. One critical position, our account, accountant one position, has remained vacant for far too long and we urgently need to fill it. The impact of cutting positions in the Auditor Controller's Office extends beyond our walls. It affects county departments, it affects special districts, our schools, and most importantly, our taxpayers. With fewer staff, our processes and services are increasingly delayed. And I assure you, it will only get worse if our vacant position is not filled. We are required to meet state, um, deadlines and I R S deadlines. And being short-staffed leaves us with little to no time for essential tasks such as training for succession planning. And, um, finding more efficient ways to process our work, though we continue our efforts to try to find the time to do these things. Um, cutting the staff in the Auditor Controller's Office doesn't just mean delays. It poses a significant risk of failing to meet critical deadlines. The consequences of, of, um, these deadlines not being met are, they lead to penalties and fees and ultimate cost our county. Um. I look for ways for us to save and some of that is in travel. I look for scholarships, for conferences and those kinds of things, which we most likely qualify for, so it does help. In that, that instance, um. And of course, we're always trying to limit how much office supplies we use and every, every little thing. But, um, cutting back on staff does, it, it does put a risk on the county. If we don't have the staff to, to meet the deadlines we need to meet.
Thank you. Anyone have questions? I, I do want to say thank you, uh, you know, I, I hope that people understand that when they come here and they share. Factual, uh, inside look at what the implications are of us looking at a hundred and forty-four million dollars, that, uh, we're not. that we're not seeing that as complaining, we're seeing that as informing.
Yes.
And I think it's important for us and the public to be well-informed. You know, we hear a lot about perhaps more visible reductions that are made. But as we'll hear, I'm sure throughout the day, many departments are struggling because the budget is so tight. They've, they've had reductions. I think, Susie, you told me twenty-two positions less in the general fund than two years ago? Or last year? Five years. So we were never fully staffed as people wanted to be. We're twenty-two less than that now. And those numbers that we were seeing in those graphs are going to keep going up. And so it's only going to get worse if we don't find a way out of it. So it helps, I think, all of us to understand what the implications are. And I think you make the good point. It's not just the strain on the individuals, but it is legally, we are required to do things by certain times.
Yes.
And so we either could fail, which can have its problems, as we were hearing from Craig earlier, or we just start to lose people because nobody wants to be set up for failure. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, open for public comment.
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I make a quick comment to all of the departments? I wanted to do it when Angela was still there. I'm not sure if she's still here, but I wanted to personally thank all of the departments for all the effort that went through in the Budget Department meetings because there were many, many iterations and discussions and brainstorming to try to figure out how we could maximize services with the limited resources we have. And I appreciate all the work that all of you do. We couldn't get to an end budget without you. That would be still maximizing the services with the resources we have. So, thank you. Thank you. And you probably don't hear thank you enough. So, thank you again.
BHS is next.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board Supervisors. Connie Smith, Behavioral Health Department. Well, the Behavioral Health budget is relatively flat. We are not a general fund department. You'll see the, we receive $5,924 of general fund money every year and, and that's it. We are self-supporting department. We bill for reimbursement for our treatment services. While our revenues are pretty flat, our expenditures, you'll start to see in this fiscal year, in this budget, our expenditures will start to shift to places that we haven't typically directed our time before. And those are driven by the CalAim requirements, justice-involved services that are now required, and Care Court Initiative that's rolling out this fiscal year as well. So, just a shift in where we're spending our dollars and probably, very likely because of our recruitment challenges, a greater push to find contractors for clinical support in the county as well. We are, we're very challenged with finding licensed clinical workers and looking to our outlying areas for a day a week for, from people. So that's, that's kind of how we're staffed now, but those are really our major, our major changes. I would like to give the board a heads-up that in 2025, beginning in calendar year 2025, we will start to roll out Prop 1 requirements. And we've brought on some additional administrative staff. We have pages of new work, new requirements, administrative work, data work, and state reporting that we'll start to focus on in order to comply with Prop 1. So we'll have a lot of policy changes and operational changes in the 25, 26 and on fiscal years. That's really all I have. Is there any questions for Behavioral Health?
Thank you. Any questions, Connie? Nope. Again, I say thank you and one of the things I think it's important to hear is that while we have departments that aren't receiving much of anything from general fund, so you're not necessarily up for the same kind of squeezing that other departments have to go through, it doesn't mean that you're sitting there with all the money and all the resources and you are still facing a lot of constraints that oftentimes are being, as Craig was alluding to, put on us from outside, but we still have to meet up to them. And especially when you're dealing with human-related services, it's not only important that we do it the right way, but we're, we're serving the people of the county. So, thank you. And I know the struggle is there for everyone, whether you're in the general fund or not. It's just maybe a little more obvious in the general fund.
Thank you. And we'd like to thank Craig also for his support and help with the budgets. Always appreciated.
Okay. Public comment? None? Okay. Thank you.
And this is where my alphabetizing skills fail us. Next, we're going to go into community development.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning.
Obviously, community development. I wanted to start off just by throwing a little curveball this year about some things that did happen. I was not able to really sit in on the departmental budget hearings that we, you know, we go through every year and they're always very, very fun. So I wanted to give a shout-out to my staff who always do a good job, the division directors. You know, there's always ups and downs in this. But the things that I would like to highlight this year especially, and I don't think they're any different than any other year, is my team is hungry. They want more. So if I went and talked to Environmental Health, Christie would tell me, "We need more people. We want to be able to do this. We want to be able to do this." If I talked to Cody in Building, "We want to do this. We want to do this. We can do more good." If I talk to Planning and I look at, you know, some of the proposal that's on the table, it's cutting consultants, potentially reducing the amount of, you know, money that we can give to our consultants because we don't have staff. The CIO said it earlier, "We have one planner." We have one planner in a large county as far as we're concerned because it's so remote, so much driving to be done. We don't want to lose anything in planning. In fact, we really would like to have at least one more planner this year and it would be great if we could hire a division director with, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years of experience. And I think that's probably shared by most people in the room. But I understand that this year is very budget-constrained and so we will continue to be looking at grants to try to take care of more services and supplies, those things that grants can take care of, while we look at trying to hopefully free up money in the coming years for more staff. But it's all about staff for community development. If we want more economic development, we just have to have the staff to perform it. So, we appreciate everything. Thank you. Thank you for support, Susie and Craig this year and obviously the CIO.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Ed?
I just wanted to thank you for the job that you do, for Bill, for what she's doing right now with the general plan. I know she could probably use four or five more people. She has a big load on her desk and talking to her recently, she is eager to get it done. She's a great employee for us and she's a staff of one. So we would, I would just like to thank her for what she's doing. I know the next year with the general plan is going to be a tough year for her. So, let her know that it is appreciated.
Will do. Will do, sir. Thank you.
Over the course of the last few weeks, I've had a number of community meetings and one of them mentioned this need to have someone who's promoting Trinity County from a planning perspective and, you know, why don't, why don't we have that person doing it? So, your comment towards that speaks to your awareness that, you know, we need to have people who can promote and really sell businesses and the idea of coming here to build, build up our stores and our communities and what have you. So, thank you for being aware of that. I know it's something the public was interested in and why we don't have that. So, appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to make one more comment and that's the fact that I didn't mention cannabis. And there's a reason because cannabis has turned the corner and they're taking care of themselves now and hopefully they're on that same glide slope to continue that. But I appreciate everything that Drew Ploboni has done for the cannabis division.
Indeed. Thank you. Any other questions? I, Susie, I have a question. So, Ed's just mentioned multiple divisions within the department. Are we going into each one of them or this is covering all those right now?
So, is what I propose, Chair, is we can go through each of the divisions, because there are so many divisions within community development, is we just go through each of the divisions.
Okay.
And then if there are questions, we go back and forth that way. If, I mean, we can go now if there's any questions department-wide. And then we'll run into, the first one would be Building, then we could go Environmental Health, Natural Resources Plan. It's kind of rolled down that way.
And we don't have to go through each one, but that's, I just want to make sure that the board and then public is aware when Ed leaves, we're done talking with all of those.
Yes.
So, let's just make sure if you have any questions around any of those.
So, let me, let me read them off just so everybody is aware and then if we want to dive into any more details, we can. So, Building and Development, Environmental Health, Natural Resources, Planning Department, Cannabis, General Plan, Cannabis Equity Grant, and Local Enforcement Agency Grant. So, any of those topics, budget units all fall under Community Development and are open for discussion right now.
Okay. So, I think what I'll do is go to public comment and then we can come back. I know I will be, I know that Drew was pulling something together for the cannabis piece that I haven't seen yet, so I'd love to see that. But let's, let's hear from the public first and then we'll come back to the board. Any in the room for any of those divisions within community development? No? Okay, online?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Well, then, Ed, if, I don't know if Drew's going to jump in or, but we do have a, I understand some slides and such to go through. Oh, there he is. Hey, Drew. Anybody else have anything other within this department? No? Okay. Thank you.
Good day. Chair, Supervisors, Drew Ploboni, Cannabis Division Director. In keeping with the last few budget presentations, I've updated this set of slides. It's a little bit different. One of the tasks related to converting to the ClearGov software is that we actually went through and broke down each of the permit types and refined sort of each of those sub-line items. So, where previously we sort of had some of the license types grouped under certain accounts. And so that, that's been refined, which is reflected in the budget book. So, I'll run through these financial highlights, really mostly related to the ancillary benefits provided by the cannabis division and licensing program. So, as you can see here, we're trending upwards in terms of cannabis tax revenue that is being collected by the county and I think much of that is a result of, you know, engaging with a collections agency to bring in some of the old historic finds that were still in the books. So, that's, that's certainly positive. On the rightmost three columns, you'll see information that was just carried over from previous presentations. I didn't go through and try to, excuse me, attempt to refine those, but I think on the subsequent slides, you will see sort of, sort of how we're trending and how we've refined the information that's being presented.
Okay, so the, the last two columns, the potential with asterisks, those are not, are not updated? That is what we originally presented?
So, those are what was previously presented and I have not modified those numbers. But on the, on the upcoming slide, you'll see that we do have some more refined information from the tax office that ultimately, you know, would change those projections that we did, you know, a year, a year and a half ago at this point. So, I don't know if there are any other specific questions on this slide. If not, we can jump to the next one. So, previously, we had the average pounds per year estimated at 400. And given the information provided to me by the Tax Collector's Office, I've revised this down to 200 pounds per year. And I think that looking at the trends, the information that was provided to me by tax office for the current reporting period, I believe, was roughly 23,000 pounds across the whole program. And so when you divide that by 300, it comes out to, you know, less than 100 pounds per licensee. But, and I, and I didn't go back through to try and figure out, you know, sort of how that curve of increased licenses where, you know, for much of that reporting period, we would have been at a lower number of total licenses than we are currently because, you know, incrementally, we've continued to trend upwards in terms of the number of active licenses. For storefront retail and non-storefront retail, we had, the figures were presented differently in the last slides, the last version of these slides. And so I've just sort of rephrased it to say storefront retail and non-storefront retail sales are taxed at 2.5% of gross sales. And again, based on information provided by the tax office, we're now estimating that the storefront retail and non-storefront retail sales tax amounts contribute approximately 10 to 15% of the total projected tax revenue, which is represented, I guess, on that first slide or is it, no, on the next. Got you. So, I think Susie was kind enough to update this and I didn't notice that. But essentially, the way that I put the numbers together was reflecting the potential that the cultivation tax, the reduction of the cultivation tax would not be continued. And so I think that created an additional roughly $50,000 for the next reporting period based on current trends. So...
Budget's set up right now. It's 100, we have budgeted $150,000 in there for potential tax revenue for this calendar year. As you and the board know, at the end of, or this fiscal year, as you and the board know, at the end of this calendar year, there is a decision point to continue or not the current 50% reduction of the cannabis tax. Because that decision has not been made, we went with the assumption that that would continue and we will be about the same revenue generation that we've seen in the past. So if that changes, if that doesn't continue, if there's a change to our current operations, there's a potential increase in revenue from above $150,000. It'll probably, you know, it will, will not just be a simple double of that. Based upon the analysis that Terry's done, it'll probably be more in that, you know, to, say, 225 range, somewhere between 225, 250, somewhere in that range if the current 50% reduction is not continued for the, for the future, if you will. But that would only affect, you know, the reporting period going for the next, for half of this fiscal year, not the full fiscal year. Because one's based upon calendar year, one's based upon fiscal year. So, and then the reporting periods too, associated with the current tax ordinance, is off as well compared to the fiscal year. So, it, it gets complicated as far as how to cleanly account for that tax revenue based upon the way that tax ordinance is set up. But those are the projections that, that we currently have in the budget right now. And that, obviously, if a change is made later this calendar year, at mid-year, we would come back and then adjust that portion of the budget projection.
Okay.
So, just moving along with the rest of the information presented in these slides, we ended the 23-24 fiscal year with approximately 295 active cultivation licenses and 100 active applications in process. One of the things that we've been working on is to go through and identify the projects that are, have been stagnant. And so you'll see as we jump to the next slide that for, for this budget cycle, we assumed 305 active cultivation licenses. Again, there's a little bit more refined information in terms of differentiating those revenue sources between cannabis license types and use permit and, and other, you know, the other, you know, what used to be known as CCVs, now Administrative Buffer Reductions. So, all of that is, is captured in terms of our total revenue, but, but... So all of that is, is captured in terms of our total revenue, but, but broken down, you know, a little bit with significantly more detail, actually. And so here you'll see that we're saying 40 active applications in process, and that's because we've been actively reaching out to the stale projects. And if we don't get a response or they don't, you know, pick up their project and move it forward, and we've been sending out incomplete letters and deeming those projects incomplete. And so 40, approximately 40 reflects the number of active applications in process. So we've moved, you know, 50 plus of those to full inactive status. And then in terms of, you know, my projections on where we'll end the fiscal year. My intent was to be exceptionally conservative in terms of how we budgeted and projected revenues for this year. So you can see that, you know, the budget itself that's being presented assumes 305 active cultivation licenses plus other, you know, permit types. And we're proposing or, you know, projecting that we'll, we think we'll see approximately 330 active licenses by the end of this fiscal year. We continue to have, you know, say 10 to 15% turnover in terms of, you know, we have roughly 350 projects that have been noticed for sequel compliance, but just over 300 that have active licenses. So I expect that we'll continue to see, you know, similar trends as far as turnover, but I think that we'll also continue to see an incremental increase as we go forward through this fiscal year. And so, you know, whereas previously we had some maybe more aggressive projections in terms of, you know, the number of active licenses that we were forecasting. So for this slide presentation, you can see we will end the fiscal, the 25, 26 fiscal year with approximately. And we just basically say, you know, we're assuming that program stability has been reached. And, you know, depending on what happens with ordinance updates, general plan updates, those types of things, we may see an increase in licenses that is not currently known exactly, you know, what the impacts of, of that will be. So I think that, that pretty much runs you through my special PowerPoint. And if you have any specific questions for me, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you, could we go back to the first slide, please? Anybody else have questions first before I jump in? First, I'd just like to say, just to clarify, people might be wondering, well, why, why is we going into so much detail with cannabis? And the reason that I specifically requested this is a year or so ago, this board awarded a million dollars to basically ensure the program continued. When we had had to shut down for various reasons and we're ramping back up, there were all the expenses of Drew and his team getting everybody back up to running, but we weren't getting the revenues in. And so the, the board looked at numbers like these and used them to help make a decision about, is that a good investment of general fund money? You know, especially, as we said earlier today, thinking about what we could do with general fund money, was that a good investment at that time? And the way that we structured it, I won't try to get down to the penny, but Suzie can do that for me. But we're about half of that money was as a quote loan, which the cannabis division has already paid their first payment of 105,000. The other about half was just basically contributed. And part of the reasoning for that was the, as we see here, some, you know, the contributions that had come into the general fund through fine revenues through other program. We had gotten many millions or hundreds of thousands of dollars, at least if not millions of dollars in general plan fees that were putting us in a position to finally do our general plan. So it was an awareness of the positive impact that some of that had had on our county. And so for me, it just felt like until we kind of get to a point of returning, we fully believe we're turning the corner, which it sounds like in many ways we are now. That we just look at this and see how, how did our assumptions hold up? And I remember for the benefit of those who weren't in the room, you know, Ed and Drew, as we were trying to do this, it was very much educated guesses. We're, we're trying to figure out, well, what will people do and what will we get and how will things play out? And, you know, we didn't know at that time that we were going to cut rates for the taxes and we didn't know what the industry would do. And so they are what they are and it's just a reflection back. I do think it's very interesting that when you look at this. When we started, well, as recently as in March, we thought we might still get 392,000 of cannabis tax. We got a little over 100. We thought at one time that we might get 901.5 million. And now we're thinking that is, we're really talking about a fraction of that amount. So I know there's been a lot of discussion I, I heard in community workshops and other things that the board's actions on the cannabis division program is what's causing the problem for the county. And while there are funds that get spent by those operating those businesses into different parts of the county and stores and such, specifically coming back into the county funds, we're talking about 100 to 150,000 this year. So I just want that to be in our heads. And, and then what I've also been hearing, Drew, and I don't, can't remember if you just covered it because I was paying attention to some of these other numbers, but my understanding is that based on the fee study work that you guys did, which was apparently very well thought out, you've been seeing that reality matches up pretty darn well with that fee study. So you're, you're, you're really expending about what you anticipated. And so that means if you in your budget said, well, what you're telling me is you think we might come in 40 or so applications or licenses higher than what we put in the budget. But that's really a cost recovery thing. The only thing it might affect is tax revenues, which we're struggling frankly to project, I think at this point anyway. Trent, I did want to come back. My understanding is the board's decision, I wasn't here at the time, but my board, the board decision was to reduce those taxes by 50% for two years and that expires in December. Does anybody remember? That's, that's my recollection.
Think that is correct.
Okay, so if anything, I would have thought that we would have included, we, we would have assumed it comes back to normal. Because a decision would have to be made by the board to keep it reduced. It's, it automatically goes back to normal. Now, I'm not going to say at this point, between now and Monday, go rewrite your budget for that little bit of money that we can't even predict very well anyway. But I am just saying that, that's how I would think about it. And, and, and I also would just say, I think it's encouraging, I know that Terry has been working with the Exela software, which also Drew's team has been. And as these systems talk to each other and as they talk to the state, we will have much easier access to information that will help us do less guesswork about cannabis tax revenues and program and all that sort of thing. So this is still to me a somewhat murky area and we're learning as we go. Unfortunately, the biggest learning point I have is that the anticipated tax revenues are apparently never going to be even close to what we thought. But it is what it is and then we at least know and then we can move on. I don't want to put you on the spot Drew, but I, I know that there has recently been an approval for a distribution center. But also I've heard it's already been appealed, but if, if that does come in, what I understand is not so much because we don't have a distribution tax on the, on the books or anything that I'm aware of, but what can happen is that a whole lot more money, whole lot, a much higher percentage of the money generated through the distribution and sale of those products raised in Trinity County will stay in Trinity County in terms of it can be packaged, manufactured, branded, sold here. And so therefore a lot more of that money is somehow going through our ecosystem. So not directly coming back into our tax revenues unless it comes into sales tax and gas tax and so forth. But is that, is there anything you'd like to clarify about that? Just I want people to feel informed about this.
Yeah, I mean, while I, I absolutely agree that, you know, having more distribution facilities in the county is quite beneficial. The only, specific to tax revenues, the only positive effect that it will have is on product that is retailed within Trinity County. So it will help to create, you know, the potential for more value added products and more revenue to the individual cultivators. And that is, I, I think of great benefit, you know, related to that, something that we don't really detail in these financial highlights is that even, you know, with these very much reduced, you know, production amounts for the program, I still think it's fair to estimate that, you know, the cannabis industry as a whole in Trinity County brings in, you know, in excess of $20 million a year in gross revenue to our county that then, you know, trickles down. So I think that's, that's more significant to note. Related to that cannabis distribution use permit that just was before the planning commission, the project proponent did offer to contribute 2% to, to the county. So if it comes before the board, perhaps you want to consider accepting.
Well, unless I'm missing something, anything that has to do with taxes, a ballot, so it would only be up to the board to say, go ahead with a ballot. But I did hear that.
There may be some other mechanism for them to contribute that 2% and it's not, you know, levied as a tax or something, but that is over my head at this point.
Mine too at this moment, but thank you for that. Okay, well, I appreciate it again, I know this is extra work specifically on you and I don't mean it to be as a, we're picking on this division. It is more about a huge investment was made out of our general fund and we're trying to see how well that investment is paying off. And appreciate that you're making sure that the program's running on a balanced budget and that the general fund is getting repaid, we have 105,000 more than we would have had if you hadn't made that payment back in. So thank you for that.
And I, I just want to say, I think it's important to note and it is, you know, somewhat detailed in, in the budget, you know, workbooks. But that, you know, the cannabis equity grant that we received from the governor's office of business and economic development has, has certainly helped to facilitate, you know, that incremental increase of total number of active licenses as currently we've given out, you know, off the top of my head, roughly $750,000 in fee waivers. So that has been very beneficial both for the program, you know, for licensees and ultimately for, for tax revenues as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you, anybody else at this point?
I just, I'd just like to make a comment on the cannabis situation since I've been sitting up here for three plus years. When I first started, we were getting sued and losing money in cannabis department here, the cannabis industry in Trinity County. Then we went to transitional provisional emergency refunds of I think 800,000 or so out of the cannabis department. To where we are now, which is a really big jump from where I was three years ago. I mean, I, I would never thought we'd have been here in a steady, you know, stable situation with 300 licensed people out here collecting any amount of tax. We now have retail with the possibility of a little bit more retail and distribution here. So I just, the transformation, I guess, of this department over any other department has been unbelievable, you know, from what you Ed staff have, has done to pull us from way underwater to treading water now to above water and having some stability here. So I just wanted to, to thank you guys for what you've done, your staff. And it was no easy lift, I know that. We were, we were in hot water when I first started and now every meeting, every minute of every meeting is not about cannabis anymore and I really, really liked that a lot. Which lets us know that we are on stable ground, that, that, you know, everything's good there, we, we got it, we know, we're okay. And that's, I wasn't sure if I was ever going to think that in my first term, it was really, really a we're in bad shape. And now we're not, and now we're actually collecting money, getting tax dollars and hopefully getting more tax dollars. And that didn't happen in the first two years of me being up here as a supervisor, it's really happened in the last 18 months or so. And I attribute that directly to yourself, Ed, and the people that work for you that have gotten us above water here, you know, finally got us some stability in the program and I think more buying from people, which will generate more tax revenue down the road. So I, I can't thank you guys enough, it's been, I, I know everybody knows I'm a pro cannabis supervisor. But just the transformation from where we were to where we are is unreal to me. I mean, this government's slow, this came around pretty good from where we were, so thank everybody involved. I probably saw five cannabis directors in my time interim. Two having, you know, one stable department there that is, that is doing a good job, we're getting our sequels done. Things are working out and I'm not sure if I said that two years ago. So thank you very much, I appreciate all you guys do.
Thank you, and we certainly wouldn't have, you know, made it through last year without that loan slash advance from the board. So we really appreciate, you know, you supporting the program and hopefully you can see that we are, you know, I think trending in a positive direction and we're pleased to be able to repay that first 105,000.
Thank you Drew, and Supervisor Cox, I think you were next.
You mentioned the grant funding that came to support the licensures that needed to go forward. Also mentioned that the fee study matches the reality of what you're seeing. And if you could just briefly speak to what will happen when that grant funding is no longer there, but we still have licenses to process.
So we, we, we currently have two different grant funded sources. One is the local jurisdiction assistance grant from the Department of Cannabis Control and the other is the cannabis equity grant from GoBiz. We, the grant term for the local jurisdiction assistance grant ends during this fiscal year cycle. And so I think that, you know, it's been of you know, amazing benefit that, that the county received that grant funding because that combined with the loan is really what has enabled us to sustain and, and get from, you know, full program shutdown and a backlog of over 400 projects to, you know, now a backlog of less than 50 and 300 active licenses. So we've made a lot of progress in the last two years. As far as the LJAG revenue source, we do expect to be able to be self sufficient, you know, and as you can see, kind of as detailed in the budget, you know, going forward. That approximately, you know, 300 to 350 licenses and permits and all of those revenue sources combined will, will continue to cover costs. We've also seen some significant reductions in costs related to that shift from, from code enforcement and, and us, you know, the cannabis division funding that, so, so that's made a, you know, half a million dollar plus reduction in our budget, which is hugely significant. And then as far as the GoBiz funding source, we do intend, I don't know if we, I haven't yet seen the grant solicitation for 2425, so I don't know if they intend to make that grant opportunity available again, just given the state's, you know, budgetary constraints. But if it is an opportunity, we will certainly apply for it again, we'll probably only be able to get the, the maximum of $500,000 because I don't imagine that the county has funds to match, which are required to receive more than that $500,000. It requires a one to one funds matching. So going forward into the future, I do expect to have at least, you know, one full calendar year or licensure year cycle that, you know, for those equity program participants, they will be able to receive fee waiver. There may be enough to, you know, do that for a portion of another year based on what we've received and what we expended thus far. So, you know, the future is uncertain, but hopefully if, you know, people have gotten through the bulk of their, you know, sort of upfront expenses in terms of being sequel compliant, you know, paying all those costs out of pocket to have their environmental documents prepared, that hopefully, you know, the majority of our cultivators are, are able to sustain their businesses going forward. But that has a lot more to do with market conditions statewide and, and isn't really something that, you know, we can do anything about at the local level other than to, you know, continue forward and getting folks licensed and allowing them to run their business if that's what they choose to do, so.
Thank you.
It seems to me Drew, the, the net of all that is if, if that equity grant funding runs out and isn't replaced, then the people who have been benefiting from it, that, that is paying for a portion of their fees will either have to pay for it themselves or they would drop out because they can't afford it. And but as you said, you're hoping that they've gotten through all the heavy lifting part and so it should be easier to address our ongoing fees without that assistance.
Yep, and, and undoubtedly, you know, as we have, see changes to the cannabis ordinance and general plan updates, that may have some impact to, you know, the, the administrative workload that's required. And so, you know, going forward into future fiscal years, we may see a reduction of cost and, and, you know, none of that is bad from a, you know, division budgeting standpoint, so.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair may I make a clarifying statement?
Please.
So in regards to the, the question about the expiration of the current fifty percent reduction, it does in fact expire at the end of this year, and there isn't any current board action required for that. So I want to clarify that.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Next, we have child support.
Oh, sure, Cody, go ahead.
Cody Smith, Senior Building Inspector, Building Division. I just really wanted to take a second to thank our accountant, Tracy Delgado. Without her, we would have not been able to do what we do. And then two, I really want to point out that the Community Development Department as a whole, I think has a really good group of people right now that are really trying to make some change and some exciting stuff. So we, we really are trying to strive to be something that our community and everyone as a whole can be proud of. So I just thank you to everybody within the department and everything that everybody does. I think a lot of times, division leads get a lot of the, you know, good jobs. But at the end of the day, we couldn't do what we do without the help of the people that we work with, so thank you.
Thank you. And I'm actually glad you mentioned that too, from the standpoint that I did want to come back to say that so much of the work that's done in this department and those divisions is tied back to our strategic plan. When we talk about revitalization and economic development and so forth, it is tied back. And yet we're still running so understaffed. So it is, is not lost, I don't think, on this board, the importance of having those resources, and we know that there is a return on investment to having them. And so I look forward to a time when we find that money. Thank you for all you do.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Bennett Hoffman. I'm the Director of Child Support Services for Trinity County. And our department runs child support for Trinity and Humboldt County. We're a combined department. We do not receive any general funds from either county. We receive all of our budget money from the state. And about sixty six percent of that is federal funds. We receive two separate allocations from the state. So the way they give us the money is they give us an allocation for Trinity County. They give us an allocation for Humboldt County. We use those allocations to run the combined department. As of about a year and a half ago, when the last Trinity County child support person retired, we run the entire department with Humboldt County staff. So both our Trinity office and our Humboldt County office are staffed by Humboldt County employees. So we get the budget allocation for Trinity County. We use that to pay the expenses locally here for the building, for other services, maintenance and so, so on. The rest of the allocation is transferred by the state from Trinity County to Humboldt County to pay for the expenses, which is mostly salaries to run both departments. This year, we received a three percent budget cut from the state. We don't anticipate that that's going to have any significant impact on the services we provide. We've got enough wiggle room there this year that we're going to be okay. And I think that's it for my presentation. Any questions?
Or members? No? Thank you. Public comment?
In the room online?
I have no raised hands.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Cooperative Extension.
Good morning, Chairman, the other Honorable Board. My name's Larry Ferro. I work for University of California Cooperative Extension as the, the County Director. So I have the administrative pieces of, of that job. I've been retired close to two years. Continue to do just a little, a little bit. Just by, by way of review, Cooperative Extension has existed in Trinity County since the forties. It's a cooperative program between the University of California USDA and the county with the University of California providing all of the program staff. And, and I'm really, we, we, we have been blessed here. And I, I, I give tremendous credit to, to personnel and that we were able to hire someone that worked forty percent doing our clerical and our clerical work in the county named Grace Hung. She works a couple of days a week. It's been just a real, a real blessing for us because we've had continuity in the office and, and good program support. I'm also really pleased to report after innumerable failed searches that we were able, last week, we had two really good candidates for our second nutrition educator that is housed in Trinity County. So I'm really, I'm really pleased to share that because it's like, oh, my gosh, you know, we get someone qualified to apply. And we actually had, had a couple really, really good candidates, and I'm hopeful to make an offer this week. Four H program has continued to, continued to grow. Our numbers are up a little bit this year. I'm, I, I think, I think, you know, some of that is definitely in reflection of Trinity County Fair and the, the market prices received by, by those youth that, that, you know, definitely, you know, are, are learning by doing. I want to thank Trent and Craig and Suzie for all of the, all of the work and all the support on the budget piece. And we can, we can, you know, again, slightly reduced budget over, over the twenty three, twenty four budget, but we can, we can make it work. So if you've got any questions or comments for me, I'm certainly happy to try to address them.
Thank you. Questions?
Oh, yes. Sorry, I just want to say thank you. I know the work you guys do is often out and not often seen, especially in the extension help for the farmers and ranchers in our, in our region. So just thank you for that and for making agricultural productive, agriculture a productive opportunity in our county.
Well, thanks, and I do want to, I do want to share Burnt Ranch School got a real nice CDFA grant. And I was really, I was really pleased to see that our, our nutrition education program supported that. And Master Gardener Program in the county reached out to, to see what, what assistance they could provide to that program. So it was, it was pretty cool. I got to talk to the, to the principal superintendent and, and she was really excited, so.
Yes, the more we can feed our kids local home based, you know, local foods is better, I think, so it's exciting.
I was, I was really pleased when I heard, oh, that's kind of cool, and we had, we had a hand in that. So anyway, thank you for that. Any public comment?
I have no raised hands.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Clerk Recorder Assessor.
Good morning. My mouth's pretty big, so I don't quite need that microphone so close. Good morning, I'm Shanna White, County Clerk Recorder Assessor, Registrar of Voters.
Mike, so the people on Zoom can hear you. Sorry.
My mouth is not that big. So I'd like to start by saying, we're in dire straits in our county. Someone who's been here for almost thirty years, working for the county, I've seen us in this position before. And we all have to make hard decisions to get through this. The, the previous auditor, Angie Bickel, she used to always start her budget meeting with the three-legged stool. The three-legged stool be in the assessor's office, the auditor's office, and the treasurer tax collector. Because that stool really funds the county, right? That's where the discretionary dollars come from is, is the tax dollars. So during our budget prep, we were all asked to prepare our budgets based on our current staffing levels and realizing a ten percent reduction in certain line items within our services and supplies. When I submitted my budget, that's what I did. I based my budget on my funded staffing levels for twenty three, twenty four. And then decreased my services and supplies by that ten percent, those line items. I wanted to add though, that I did include in my budget those two funded positions, but they were vacant at the time. I ran recruitments to try and fill those positions. They were unsuccessful. I requested to rerun those recruitments and I was told to hold off because we don't want to bring somebody in just to let them go until after we go through these proceedings. The budget being presented to you today does include funding for one of those positions. As of my opinion, the only reason one of those positions was filled is because we found some grant money that funds two thirds of it. And then cutting my, my budget more than the ten percent that was requested of, of all departments. The position not being funded is in the elections office. So I'm going to have to pool people from the assessor's office to help get me through November, which is a detriment to the role being completed and done and processed on a daily basis. I'd also like to remind everybody that I am the Clerk Recorder Assessor, Registrar of Voters. That's four divisions with a current staffing level of five. That's including myself. We all have to make sacrifices though, for the betterment of our county. And I've and I've budgeted my funding as requested. And of course, as I stated, we all need to make sacrifices, so we'll live by that. My team and I are going to do our best to live within this budget without making any changes to the department that's going to affect the public. I can't guarantee that'll happen, but that is our goal. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Shannon, I would just ask if you, if you had to guess, where would be the most likely place that the public might start to experience a difference in the level of service because of the constraints?
We would probably have to close the office. So right now, we're open Monday through Friday from nine to one and then two to four. We would probably have to reduce those hours. What they would be, I don't know. I don't want to do that. And I would do it to minimally, minimally, sorry, affect the public, but that could happen. But like I said, that's not something we're going to try and, we're going to try and live without doing that.
Okay, thank you for that. Public comment?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next department is CAO.
All right, Chair, so within the CAO budget are the Administration, Clerk of the Board, General Services, Vehicle Abatement, Library, and Solid Waste. Each of those are outlined in the budget book as far as, you know, activities ongoing, accomplishments, goals. And I'll do a, a quick introduction on them and then we can just kind of open it up for, for questions. And ask us to hold the library discussion until after we go through the other CAO items, and then we can go through the library discussion at the end, if that works for everybody. So.
So just questions about everything but the library at this point?
Yes.
Okay, any, any questions for Trent? Non-library? Okay, we'll take public comment on the non-library portion.
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Want to say some more about library or just take questions?
I do, yeah. So on the library, there's, there's been lots of, lots of discussion, lots of interactions. I, I hit on a little bit of that during my overall introduction. And we do have a, what I would call a formal proposal from the Friends of the Library, which includes a monetary contribution. Or this is all proposed, a proposed monetary contribution and a proposal to reduce the, the level of operating hours open to the public in Weaverville to eighteen hours, Hayfork to eight hours, and Trinity Center to four hours. We have run the numbers on that based upon what are proposed. But it was, that was sent out on the sixth of September, which included a little bit different, you know, staffing levels and different timing of changing levels of services. We can accommodate the, the Friends of the Library proposal. The, the difference will be in some of the, the unknown. And I would ask for, you know, direction here before we bring back the, the final budget for adoption on the first would be, you know, for, for us to, to flush out the details associated with the, the timing of the, you know, change of current services and the personnel affected by that, by those, by that change of timing. From our general discussions, we've been able to run the numbers so far. We are right in the same range as far as budgetary commitment, budgetary need of what's proposed in our budget, which ran a couple of the positions a little bit longer into January, but changed a little bit of the, the other services and the other libraries. But from a budgetary perspective, I believe, like I've said, we can accommodate and, and really go with the Friends of the Library proposal. But I, I want to flush out those numbers a little bit more before we make any final, final recommendation to, to the board. We just haven't had time to, to flush all those out. But just in general terms, we're, we're very close, I would say.
Great. Questions?
The direction you need then is?
So I, I would like just direction before we bring back the final budget for adoption on the first would be, you know, flush out the details of the Friends of the Library proposal and bring back the, the specific budgetary implications of those and that the timing that the services, current services would, would decrease. Whether that would be one November, one December, you know, one January, what, what those would be. And then how we can fully accommodate the, the, the proposal plus the realities of the current staff and HR rules that we've got to work through and all that kind of stuff. I think we're just a little premature to, to make a final decision or recommendation today on that. But in, again, in concept and general terms, I'm, I am very confident we can make the Friends of the Library proposal absolutely work.
Awesome.
Yeah. I do just want to say a huge thank you to those folks who are working so diligently to make the library happen. I love your authenticity and your dedication. I love how you are realistic and balanced and very generous with your time and digging wholeheartedly into what resources may be available to us. This is a really beautiful manifestation of what it looks like when a community comes together and sits down to a table of understanding to see what the realities are, to understand what history has been, that maybe we've understood and maybe we haven't well understood. And to say then, how do we come together and go forward in a way that becomes sustainable to where maybe at some point in the future, we don't have to have this conversation around this particular topic anymore. And my gratitude is just wholehearted. Thank you.
Any others? So just a, a quick summary from my standpoint, what we're basically saying and, and direction that you're looking for and, and support is by maintaining the existing amount of funding that we have a set aside for the library, but perhaps repurposing it to some extent, you will work with the Friends of the Library and their proposal to work out details and MOUs and all those sorts of things. But the anticipation is that no offices, sites of the library will have to close. They will be available for fewer hours, some. And some of that will be volunteers, some of it will be funding from outside. But you believe that the way that the proposal reads and the discussions you've had, we can achieve that with what you've got in hand.
Correct.
Okay, does the board have any concern about that direction to support that approach?
Thank you.
That, that is the biggest one of the day so far. As we've heard a lot out, a lot of talking about that now, it does pull on the heartstrings of Trinity County. For the board and the Friends of the Library to get together and, and pull this off in a very short period of time. Huge kudos to everybody involved. That, that's a big thing, getting rid of libraries, none of us wanted to do. I think some people thought that we didn't care or something like that, but we did immensely care about this. And we worked hard to get where we're going to actually work with an MOU. Yes, it'll be decreased hours, but no, they won't go away. And I think for this county, that is a huge, huge moral victory for the kids, the parents and everybody that uses it. So I just wanted to thank yourself, everybody who's worked on this, Friends of the, of the library. Big win for the county, which I didn't think a month and a half ago, we really had the chance of doing. So thank everybody involved.
Indeed. Thank you very much, everyone. Public comment, please?
I have no raised hands.
Well, thank you, Trent. Thank you, Friends of the Library and supportive members of the community. That's really awesome. Okay, next.
Next, we have the district attorney.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board, Trent, and our accountant. My position is that of the district attorney and the public guardian. Under the classifications, I am allocated fourteen positions. I currently have nine. Recently, I had to give up one employee to Victim Witness, which is a grant-funded department in the D A's office. The people that work in that department cannot cross over. They have to keep track of all of their time for the purposes of the grant. And so my district attorney's staff, we basically lost one-eighth of our force. And that has put us in a rather awkward position. Under the Constitution of the State of California, the penal code, and statutory law, I am required to provide discovery to defense attorneys. That means that I have to give them everything that I have in my file against a client that they represent. I am only required by law to supply that at least thirty days before the trial. However, my policy since I got here was to do the discovery as quickly as possible, thereby allowing the attorneys to speak to their clients, get cases settled, get them off of the calendar. And that discovery is being delayed. I only have two secretaries. The one person that was sent over to Victim Witness, she is, or she was basically the deputy that handled all discovery. So now that has to be shared by just two secretaries. And the two secretaries are doing the work of three people. Late discovery means that possible settlements are later, more calendar time. And it's really put the hurt on my office. Now, I know you understand that. I just wanted to let you know. Okay? Now, the other thing is, and this was brought home to me last week when I had one of the secretaries out on a well-deserved short vacation. I had the office manager who was out ill. And the other secretary called in ill. I had no complaints go out that day. Nothing got charged. And I now have a deputy who is out with COVID. So there's the timelines that come with the COVID finding and reduced staff. And if things keep going and the COVID that we're all hearing about continues to spread like it has, a long time out of the office is going to be brutal for us. And I know every other department in the county has like problems. But I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I do. So I don't know how to say I'm sorry for what you're facing in a way that is meaningful and translates into what you experience on a day-to-day basis. And appreciate your and your staff's commitment to just excellence in what you do, trying to get things out timely. My question would be, in a similar vein to what we heard from our auditor, if you are delayed beyond what you would like or what's required, are there penalties and fines associated with that at any certain point?
There are for people that are in custody. If someone is in custody and I don't file charges within forty-eight hours of the arrest, they're released.
Other questions? Public comment?
I have no raised hands.
Thank you. I will, I will just say thank you. I know that you worked very hard actually to staff that department up. Because for a while, it seemed like you were the only one in the office. And so I know you worked really hard to get there and now to have to move backwards, it's got to be tough. Not just because it's more work, but it's, you know, you risk some pretty bad outcomes. So I appreciate that and.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Next, we have H H S.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Liz Hamilton, Director of Health and Human Services. I hope to bring you maybe a bit of good news before the lunch break. And I know that I stand between us and the lunch break, so I'll be efficient. For those of you who don't know me, I've been with Health and Human Services over eighteen years and the director for four and a half years. And I've learned a lot. And one of the things that I know is that our team, our executive team, has a growth mentality and is very creative and innovative. I'm thankful for our fiscal team who helped put our budget together. Kate, John, and Jamie are exceptional, and then the staff under them really couldn't do it without them. Health and Human Services, we serve our community through a variety of means, direct resource or direct services, resource and referral, and health and safety education. We care deeply about those who call Trinity home, and we care for our most vulnerable in our community. We often meet them in their hardest hour. And we offer many resources, but most importantly, we offer hope. The people we serve have stories of heartache and triumph, all on their own path with different means, different timelines, and different definitions or characterizations of success. We get to honor all paths. Our budget narrative outlines many of the areas we are most proud this last year. And what you glean from our highlights is that our staff are pioneers and proud of the work they do. It matters to them. It's our investment into our community that we serve. My hope is that in addition to the hard work that you hear and read about is also our work ethic that drives us to serve as a conduit of resources, finance, and effort into other county departments. We are committed to these partnerships and strive for excellence at every turn. We care about the well-being and functionality of all county departments so that we, as one entity, can be successful. Our agency framework, we've continued to grow. In the eight years that I've been in our administration, we've seemed to acquire new departments on a fairly routine basis. And we are proud to take that on and deliver what I believe is with excellence. Our agency is, our framework is in three branches. We have our human services, our health services, and our administrative branch. Within those are multiple divisions, units, serving and delivering hundreds of programs to our community. Which, as Trent highlighted earlier, that we serve more than half of our community in a direct or resource and referral basis. We do serve a whole of community in our public health and Office of Emergency Service programs. We have ninety-eight allocated F T Es. We did add one. We snuck that in there in August. Of those, I'm happy to report that housing, veterans, O E S, and public health divisions are fully staffed. Our social services division has eighty-one allocated positions. Sixty-three of those are filled and eighteen are vacant. I'm really pleased, I think, with your support in our bargaining unit this year. We have gone from a thirty-six percent vacancy rate to now an eighteen percent vacancy rate with the eighteen openings that we have. That reprieves a lot of the work on staff's shoulders on a daily basis. We do have twenty budget books in an operational budget of forty-point-seven million. We do have, not included in that is our I H S S program. We do have wages of four million roughly that are added into a county workforce or state workforce, if you will. One of the primary things that we see across the county that is highlighted is food insecurity. We see that in schools. We see that with the food bank. But in our programs, we average seven-point-five million a year in supplementing food cost to family members and persons. And those persons are of all stories. Those are single parents. Those are dual-income households. Those are elderly on retirement that, when they have to choose of what bills they pay, we get to come in and support and supplement with food as needed. I don't think that the perception of folks on welfare of old actually reflects the current realities of now. General Fund invests in four primary areas. And if, Suzy, if we can pull up the slides, which you have a copy of, although you do have an additional two pieces of paper there that dive in a little bit deeper for some of the backup information. But here you see in our social services, which is our largest division of the agency, is twenty-nine-point-five million, public health just shy of ten million. And then our housing, which we acquired last year. We actually grew an estimated budget of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from last year to now five-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand. A lot of that in grant writing that we are able to secure. I do echo the sentiment of grant writing is difficult. And more than anything, it's the tracking mechanisms on the backside of grant reporting to state and federal partners that is very time-intensive. And if you need a match for those grants, it has to come from somewhere. And so I'll just offer my plug on the difficulty of grants sometimes. The four categories where you support our agency and the work that we do with General Fund, the top two, General Assistance and Public Guardian, well, statutorily, you are required. You cannot opt out of those requirements. And so when you do have your General Fund and discretionary monies, these are mandatory. And if we can go to the next slide, Suzy. So General Assistance, we, I would say, we have folks that fall within a federal rate of poverty. We have people in deep poverty. And then we have this class that falls actually below deep poverty, meaning that these are individual adults that do not qualify for any of our programming and where the county then picks up to support them. They are often put into two categories, workable and non-workable. Our largest population would be the non-workable. Maybe they're waiting on their social security applications to go through. And we are helping them supplement it until the application is processed. When it is, we are then reimbursed for that which goes back into General Fund. That process can take a while. And the state, we were in a receipt of some temporary funding called H D A P, where you recently, actually, in the last two months, approved a contract for a law firm that we contracted with. We took that H D A P allocation. We hired an attorney that they meet with our clients and go after social security applications so that they can get in and get served faster. It's a difficult system to navigate, even for us. And so persons without any resources, including a phone, this has been very beneficial. So draw your attention to your, there it shows the annual program expense at the top, the county general fund investment. Now, we're only tracking the last three years because that's when we kind of came on board with this change with General Fund. The repayment to the county would be fees from, you know, social security that then go and offset that amount. So we will keep track of that. You'll notice last year, we had a significant change in the annual program expense. We had, in twenty-two, twenty-three, had almost a hundred-and-seven-thousand, and it dropped considerably. Well, we have new time study codes and we've gotten very creative. And we're constantly discovering new ways in which we braid funding. And this is one example of where we work really hard to save the county money where we can and where it is ethical and available to do that. And then I'll draw your attention to the persons served on the bottom. And this is a range over twelve months, where in twenty-one, twenty-two, we were serving as few as three people. And now, actually, case load right now is actually thirty-three. So a significant jump in the persons that we're serving that kind of fall into this below-deep-poverty indigent category. The next slide is our public guardian. These are folks that we serve. And we conserve them and we operate oftentimes their person, meaning their placement of where they live and then their finance. There are many programs that are similar within this that I'm going to really just focus on, just the probate aspect of this. There are, there's actually a second category to this, but there's different funding for that. For just a snapshot of the last four years, you can see where we have your investment at the top. But then we pay back through indirect costs to offset that, largely county council fees, because this is a legal process. So we offset those costs. We sometimes even get repayment to the county from those persons that we serve. There are fee schedule attached to the service. And so when we are able to collect in that fee service, we use that to offset. And so the general funds, general fund expense that you see in red is your contribution. Persons served in this program continues to grow quite a bit. And right now, we are serving forty individuals in this program. Should I pause?
I was just trying to see if we could unblock this upper right part of the screen, but.
I tried on the last.
Okay, thank you.
I'll remember that for next time and flip it for any chart. The next program that we receive General Fund is the Office of Emergency Services. While the last two that I spoke about are statutorily required, Office of Emergent Services is a program that you guys invest into. We have now had O E S in Health and Human Services for seven years. In August, it was seven years. And I'm very proud of what we've been able to do with this program. As you can see, over that seven years, your contribution with General Fund is nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, a little over. And I put this into two different columns. One where that's your investment. We do have two grants that you match to, H S G P and E M G P. Those together make up a whole budget, which isn't necessarily shown here, just showing your portion. But we have community investments and then the county investments of how we invest this back into kind of just the community. So your dollar invested turns into one-point-four million that's invested. And the community investments are. And the community investments are largely the first responders, fire departments, volunteer fire departments, ambulance, at occasion, they needed help with radios. And so every year we look to see how we can serve our first responders in the community, and that's invested there. And then other county departments as well. So that nine hundred and fifty thousand is invested back into county departments for their operations. And that could be the Sheriff's Department, IT Department, Environmental Health, Social Services, and you, attached actually to the packet I gave you is a breakdown of how that's spent. You will need to stare at that for some time to make it make sense. So I'm really proud of this investment that you guys make and then how we turn around and invest even greater into the community, really doubling our efforts there. And then finally, the fourth bucket that you invest into, and this I am incredibly proud. We inherited Veteran Services in the nineteen-twenty fiscal year. In December, we were able to hire a Veteran Service Officer who does phenomenal work. What what I want you to see is that when we inherited this program, it had been at a standstill for a certain amount of time, and we really just took it and decided to build it, put a structure around it. And by we, I mean Jennifer, she gets all the credit for this. And we have built from a part-time allocation that I appreciate in the last two years, you have invested in creating one full-time position that has meant a lot to the veterans of this county. Now, we do pay indirect costs that kind of go back into this. And then we have subvention funds. And her budget, which is tricky, when we hear, you know, we need to create budget cuts, you know, ten percent for all, and which we've done, actually more probably than that, but we can't cut her travel and training because without it, she's not eligible to reimbursements. And so her budget is really whole. You fund what you fund. There's no cutting unless you cut the FTE. But I would show you from your investment into this that in her first year, we saw two hundred and seventy-five veterans becoming benefited to now three hundred and sixty-three benefited. There are hundreds more in the queue and that have been made contact. This is just reflecting actuals of what we're seeing. And that has an increase of, I think to local economy, really six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in monthly benefits being distributed to Trinity County, which is a little over seven million a year, just where we're at. And so your investment of a hundred and thirty-one thousand last year turns into over seven million for the county, which is amazing. And then what's attached is it's broken down kind of by zip code where you can see where where folks are being served specifically in there. And so in summary, you know, I just want to thank you for your investment in these four program areas in our department. I feel proud of the work that we do and then how we maximize that for the community's benefit. I know that this is a difficult budget year. And I know that you're committed to doing, to maximize and make the best of the resources that we have, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that you guys have had community meetings and have engaged the public. I know that staff have attended those and have walked away feeling really proud of the work that you guys are doing and how you're communicating with the public and feeling like you're representing us staff very well. So thank you for that. I appreciate the work that Trent and his team do. And while he may have listed himself on the chopping block, I would say absolutely not. And I can make my own public comment. I appreciate you, Trent. I think that the work that you've accomplished in the last year and a half has been tremendous in organizing the work of all the departments and I think making this difficult decision to say we are no longer doing the one-time Band-Aids and actually allowing us to have creativity. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions and go from there.
Thank you. Questions for?
Yes. Thank you for all the hard work that you do. Your department is so shiny. I love that there's so much good going on. Makes me happy. I'll speak to two things, three things, two just comments. The improvement in the Office of Emergency Services is widely recognized within the community. I think that the work that has been done there, especially just in the last couple of years, really shines forth when the fires hit and different things that happen. There's a new confidence, I think, that people are able to project onto that, to that department. And I'm grateful for that since it seems like I live as we all do where there's fires constantly. And just having folks that we know their name, and when they give us information, we trust that it's real and it's going to come through. So that's been really, really good. I also talk quite a bit with local veterans and the improvement in that department as well really is a heart swell of gratitude from the folks who are our veterans, especially our senior veterans who need even more additional help and support. And I'm just grateful to see that moving forward. Having have lived through conservatorship issues and no wills within the family and different things. It is an absolute nightmare. And I have had friends who have encountered, you know, scenarios where their parents have rapidly declined mentally and things weren't prepared. And it's just such a very, very difficult time. Is there anything that you could, you can suggest or observe in other counties or just in the public in general, that we as a community in terms of providing services or even doing free workshops for will preparation or something like that? Is there anything that would help sort of solve some of this end-of-life crisis that either hits the surviving family members or causes the person passing to have despair?
So there's a very complex answer. When you're looking at the spectrum of our aging population, which we know around thirty percent is over the age of sixty-five here in our community, living wills or trusts are always a great way to go. We become involved with the individuals specifically later on in that spectrum where they don't have family involved and where we our mission is to go and connect them to family first before we as a county entity would get involved legally, right? And so for any person, having a plan with their family would be ideal in having their estate and their plans written and you know, through a legal process is ideal. Now, for those that don't have family and where we come in and step in in that place, it is just, it becomes, it's a complex system to navigate. And there's also those individuals with extreme mental health that might go into an LPS conservatorship that become more complicated. So for us, I would say some of that legwork is just navigating sooner. And you know, where the sad story is that the folks we work with, they have no one else.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you. I run across quite a few veterans here in my store and quite a few of your employees here in my store. And I'm always shocked how the morale of the people in your department is up high. They buy, they buy in, they do a good job and I think that might be difficult in the job that you guys do. So I give you a lot of credit for that, almost to the person that they like it, they love it. So when you work with something in the department that you do that's one-on-one, it means very significant to the person that you're talking to. It's very significant that the person who's doing the talking cares. And I think that they do. Also, I run into a lot of veterans at my store here, and Jennifer's doing a great job. I mean, to the person from five years ago to now, it's total three sixty. So thank you, her. And we do have a large amount of veterans in Trinity County, probably more than the average county.
We do.
So thank you on both of those things. That's a tough job and it's getting done. And it's just another piece of the pie in the county that's starting to come together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just like to give a little credence to the comment that you made that sometimes people can just look over, but you talked about truly wanting to work on the benefit of the whole county. And I had the opportunity at your invitation to sit in and observe people digging in, brainstorming, collaborating. There is no silos, there's no, it's mine, not yours. It is how can we all work together to achieve something for the county? And it was, it was a thing of beauty. So thank you for inviting me and thank you for creating the culture that that thrives in. So thank you. Okay, a public comment.
Ben Kellogg?
Good afternoon. I just want to echo the comments by the board and applaud both HHS and the DA's office. I mean, they are the gold standard, in my opinion, for departments within the county. I mean, they really care. They see people at their darkest hour and they truly want to help. So I'd really like to applaud that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Liz. And team?
Next, we have HR.
Go ahead. No, wait?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good afternoon. Chairman and Board, Leila Kassiz, Director of Human Resources and Risk Manager. I'd like to start out by kind of making sure that everybody understands the history of the HR department and what the sparseness of the number of people in the department built and caused here in the community. That we've had a lot of interims, we've had a lot of people turnover, we've had a lot of a very small department. I think it was a department of one at one point for some time. And in that, there were a lot of things that did not get to get looked at. We've had to focus on the here and now instead of where we need to be for the future. We have let different things not be, okay, for example, policies are way out of date. There's a lot of contrast between code and policy. If you look at our risk management side, workers' comp kind of just went crazy. Nobody managing it, nobody making sure that people are coming back and getting better and and being productive rather than just money going out all the time for it. The job descriptions even of the whole county are very old and behind and need to be updated with current laws and responsibilities that as you've heard from prior people up here, have changed, that we need to be looking at different people and different experiences and different certifications and backgrounds now. So it really goes into, and I know everybody knows this, but HR is always the one to be cut first, both in the private sector and the public sector. And so I'm just want to make sure you understand what losing people in HR does is, is most of the time not seeable or, but it's definitely felt throughout the community. Having less recruiters to bring people in, it just, it just affects everything. We had a staff of myself, two in HR, and one in Risk Management with also a extra help helping out administratively. Our extra help was released. And the two that we have are actually, thank you, HHS, not that you've already stole the show today, but and cannabis, of course, but they are paying for our two HR people besides myself. And I, we couldn't make it without them. Our continued development and being able to sustain liabilities that are out there, both on the risk side and the HR side, are contingent upon the people that we have in the position, which I'd like to say seem like they're here to stay. And I'm very happy about that so that we can get some continuity and start making things more efficient for the organization in order to continue moving forward and to continue helping our, our community. In the absence of having people working for the department, many contracts were made to make up for to have people from the outside do the jobs that people on the inside could be doing for far less. Unfortunately, some of those contracts continue because they had timeframes surrounding them that we have to continue paying for those contracts. In some cases, we probably, we haven't even received some of the things that we were supposed to get from them because nobody was managing those contracts. And so one of the things we're trying to do is figure out how the department can support all of that that's, that was being done by contracts and we can get rid of those contracts and save the county money by doing it ourselves and do it more efficiently as well. I think that's mostly what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Questions for Leila? Okay, thank you. It's a very notable difference in the investment that I see in culture, in team building, in engagement. And I think especially in a situation where departments are strained financially, that makes a huge difference. It doesn't, doesn't fill the void, but it helps a lot. And I appreciate your work on our behalf.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Unless we have a request, I mean, I will take a break here shortly, but I am not planning unless somebody requests it here on the board or staff to take a lunch break. I'm just saying, unless you say we need a lunch break, I'm just planning to move ahead. What's next?
We have IT.
Okay, then maybe we'll take a break right after that, just a short break.
I'm used to sitting down there. Downright comfortable, almost. My name is Michael Singleton. I'm the Chief Information Officer for Trinity County. And our department is trusted with planning, configuring, installing, and maintaining the county's digital infrastructure. Like every other department here, we fall short of our ideal funding level. We have four members on our staff. And that's about seventy-five or so staff to every IT employee. I did a study years ago, this is a couple, few years ago, of small and midsized counties. And the ideal staffing or the mean staffing level was about fifty to fifty-five to one, fifty to fifty-five staff to one IT employee. So we're a bit short on that. We'll continue to operate at that level. And, but what happens is that you're not able to get everything done. So we'll prioritize as necessary. And I am grateful that one of our positions is funded through a non-General Fund department. So I'm very grateful for that. that. Our fixed assets budget through the general fund is zero. This fund, uh, this account funds much of the major equipment and software that we deploy throughout the county. Fortunately, we have several non-matching grants that are available, uh, for us to judiciously and selectively, uh, fund our fixed assets, uh, account. Uh, one of the issues with grants, though, is that they are tailored to specific categories and have a time limit on their usage. Um, so to that end, they're not something that's a forever or, uh, a guaranteed forever funding mechanism. I am very grateful, though, to our CAO and to this board and to our budget officer. They have been very supportive throughout this process. Um, this this meeting, I've been here twenty-three years, close to twenty-three years, and this meeting is is not unlike many of the other budget meetings that I've been to over the years. They have usually, you know, we usually get the, uh, sad to say doom and gloom. Um, some have been more, some have been less. Um, but if we, if there is a CAO and a board that can show that, uh, a fully funded county with a fully funded sheriff's office, library, and animal control department is a viable business model, then I think this board can probably do that. I'm happy to see that you all are tackling this problem long term. You're not putting, uh, uh, Band-Aids on it. And maybe in the future, if, uh, this is a workable model, um, a few years, there'll be benefits. We'll be able to show that. And that's it. Unless there are questions.
Thank you. Questions? Oh, my God, I just say thank you. I know that, uh, you know, in the last couple of years, you've had to deal with, uh, the major cybersecurity issues. You've tackled some major upgrade initiatives. You're working on the website, and you're doing all those kind of heavy lifting things while still providing services at a high ratio of employees to support personnel. So thank you for making it happen.
Well, thank you for noticing that. I I have to say, when we had the cybersecurity incident, uh, I think Trent had been here maybe two months, possibly three. I'd either give him a call or text him on a Saturday morning to let him know what's going on. Actually, I may have texted him the Friday before, and, uh, late at night, you know, probably close to midnight, he finally gets a hold of it, calls me or gets a hold of me in the morning. Um, and I wasn't really expecting much. I I texted him just simply to let him know that we have an issue and these are ramifications right now. Um, he gets, he says, I'll get back to you in a little bit. He comes back with an insurance company. Insurance company has a, uh, a cybersecurity group that, um, they work with. So we got right in touch with them. On Sunday, we had a meeting set up, um, as to what process we're going to use to to tackle this issue, and we were pretty much a go. And I think when Monday came around, we had some things we had to do. But I think by Tuesday, we were basically operational. So, um, many, many kudos to that. He he far exceeded what I expected, um, as as far as, uh, getting things going and getting us set up. So, and I appreciate all of you and Susie and Craig as well, too, for, um, you've been very, very supportive board. Um, and I can't say in all the years I've been here that every board has been, um, this supportive or this in tune, um, with, uh, county staff. That that's that's my opinion, but, um.
Thank you for that.
For what it's worth.
Thank you. Public comment.
I have, I have Ben Kellogg.
If there is any department in this county that should be fully funded and more, it's IT. They are involved in so many confidential and things that could mess up this county for a very long time. And, uh, for a data breach to only to have been secured after three to four days, that's exceptional. And kudos out to the entire team. But, um, they need the money because there's a lot of bad actors out there, and you all don't want ninety-five percent of what the county has out in the dark web being sold. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, let's take a ten-minute break. What's next? Uh, which one's next? Probation, okay. We are back in session, and our next subject is probation.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Ruby Fiero, Chief Probation Officer. And the probation is often a little bit mystified for people. So I just want to take a moment to read our mission statement. The Trinity County Probation Department, as an integral part of the justice system, provides direct services to the court, community, and offenders. Our mission is to protect the community, strive to prevent and reduce the frequency, severity, and impact of criminal and delinquent behavior among adults and juveniles who come within the jurisdiction of the probation department. We enforce court orders, promote responsible behavior in offenders, provide information and recommendations to the courts, provide services to the victims. We establish accountability, opportunity, and to our victims in this community. And probation's often hard to describe because we have such a vast area of responsibility and many, many mandates from the state. And this department, we invest in our staff. You know, that's where a lot of our money is. It's in our staff, and our people work with people. That's where the investment should be. And in our work, we are preventing more crime from happening in the community. We reduce recidivism. So that's the reduction of repeat offenders as well as trying to divert people from the system. And I have officer on duty twenty-four hours, seven days a week. That's a piece that seems to be missed by people quite frequently. And the mandates that we are required to fulfill by the state are high liability for county. And if we don't have the ability to meet those mandates, that increases the chances of lawsuits and things going wrong. And wanted to point out that our revenue streams, we have ten major different revenue streams coming in from state, and then general fund is a small part of our budget. We work closely with all of our other county partners. And I'm often grouped in, you know, with the sheriff's office and the DA. We're part of the court justice system. We work with the courts. I work with HHS as much as I also work with the sheriff and with the Superior Court. And we're very multifaceted in what we do. The budget cuts that we have been basing over this last year could have amounted to losing about a quarter of our staff, and that's very concerning. And we have a lot of plans in place into the future of how to continue and mitigate that. This budget year, we worked with other county partners to be able to use some of our realignment funds to cover some of those losses that could be there. And and I really would like to say, within this community and these county leaders, the amount that we work together and try and fill certain gaps, or it's filling the gaps of needs and services by also how we leverage the funds and have different pass-throughs. And there's the creativity and the, there's not any, um, real difficulties in these discussions. It's, you know, how can we help each other? And I just really want the community to know that's what kind of leaders that they have. And this budget year, it was incredible, the amount of work that we've done together to make things work. Now, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer. If you're asking specific numbers, I'll have to bring up my business manager.
As you all, Brad. Do you have any? Yes, go ahead.
So, uh, Ruby.
So Ruby, you mentioned, you said for this year, using realignment dollars. And so that takes my mind to the last few years when we've been as a county grabbing Band-Aids from different places. Is what you've done to meet needs for this year, something that you can continue to do going forward? Or something that we're going to need to find a different fix for in years to come?
So in the probation world, even outside of the county budget, we've known that many cuts were coming from the state and been projecting this for years. That's why our reserves were higher, knowing that we would have to dip into reserves because our budget was not sustainable and going to have to make changes. And was projecting particularly with CCP funds, what would get us through about four to five years of the deficit spending that we had? And with what the board determined to do this year, that brought down that ability to more of about probably three years of what we were previously funding. And so it's not sustainable. And it is something that we were also projecting that as other staff were leaving the department, my department and the other departments, CCP funds, several different pieces of different departments in the county. And CCP is not my budget. I'm a pass-through for it and I'm the chair of the board. But it's a vote decision by the board about what happens with those funds. And so to answer your question, no, it's not sustainable. And yeah, it's just part of the long-term planning that we've known.
Wondering if the follow-up question comes now or next year? Do we have ideas for what happens in three years? Or is that something we just have to work on over the next three years?
But there's different changes that will happen within the budget. And the state's always fluctuating. That's where a lot of these funds come in, right? And and also with projecting that we would probably have less staff in the future. And looking at other areas to cut costs and other funds that could be leveraged. Yeah, so is it going to get easy? No. It it's an ongoing process. We're very reliant on state funds that that changes year to year.
Well, I appreciate your comments regarding the working together and the creativity. And you're a huge piece of that along with all the folks that you've mentioned. So thank you for that and all that you do.
Thank you. I've had, sorry. I've had some questions from folks about, you know, that we don't currently use our probation facility for the staffing or the hosting now because I call it of juvenile offenders, but rather outsource that at this point. Can you just speak to budgetarily if that was different? If we were still trying to operate our own? That'd be more or less expensive.
I'll answer that at a high level. I intend on doing a presentation in the future as things around those costs change. But the decision to close that facility was made based on the ability to fund staffing it. And also what resources are available in this community. And with youth in custody, the costs are very high. The, having to staff a facility, whether you have one youth in there or 10, yeah, those are all governed by the Board of State Community Corrections, how many staff we have to have on the floor. And so whether I had one youth in custody or 10 youth in custody or no youth in custody, we need to have a certain amount of staff to run a facility 24/7 within those governed numbers as well as to be able to account for people getting sick on vacation. You know, it's very expensive. When this is brought up, I, I don't like to point to the sheriff for certain things, but when we look at the issues at the jailhouse with staffing, I would have the exact same problems and we would be competing for staff.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I know you and I had had some discussion about that, but I just thought since it had been coming up in public discussion, it'd be helpful for them to hear directly from you about that.
And the bottom line on that is that it is more cost-effective to contract out. We do work with the other facilities that we have youth in. Our primary facility is Tahima County. We work very closely with them to make sure that our youth are getting the services that they should be getting. We invest money into that facility out of another funding stream that comes in from the state as well as I have input into the functionings of that facility. So it's cost-effective to do that. And our kids that are in custody have more access to more resources than what's available here.
Thank you. And I appreciate that because even in the recent board matter that you brought, I saw that there was not only just a capacity issue, but a specific set of services for the needs of the person that you were trying to make sure was accommodated. And again, that just gets that much more complex when you have to ins- or source that all yourself versus rely on facilities that have those areas of expertise. So, thank you. Okay, public comment.
I have, oh. I have no raised hands.
Thank you. Thank you, Ruby.
Sheriff is next.
Hello, sir. On board, Tim Saxon, Trinity County Sheriff. So here we are again. And every year, it's so good to see Craig over there. This year, my first requested budget was a request to fill all of my allocated positions. And this is not a slap in the face. What this is, is to show everyone what is necessary for the sheriff's office to provide an adequate level of service to the people of Trinity County. It's to show everyone, this is the amount of money to fill the positions, to go out there, fund the jail, run the jail, provide communication services for 911 through dispatch, and also provide a an adequate level, not a minimum, not an excellent, but an adequate level of patrol services to the county. And that amount was $14,247 and some change. Obviously, you can't fund that. We came back a second round with another number. Obviously, that still didn't work. And the CAO came back to our office and requested, excuse me, requested cuts of another million dollars. That cut an extreme level and staff and I sat down for another week and made some dramatic, dramatic cuts. I mean, you call cuts to the bone, we cut off limbs. Basically, this budget you have is filling 36 and a half out of 59 allocated positions. So what does that do? The coroner's office, this budget keeps funding level at the requested amount of $73,560. For search and rescue, general fund, the request was 19,000, 370. That was entirely cut out. However, it was replaced with Title III money in the amount of $17,715. What this will change, Title III can only be used for certain things, so it will cut out some training opportunities for SAR members. SAR is a 501(c)(3), so they do have some monies available that they can use for that. The jail was a significant cost to our budget, and that is a mandated program. We have to run that jail. We have to staff it as fully as possible. We requested $5,815,228. That was to fund all 23 positions. We were able to get funding last year for 20 positions. This year, we got funding for 22 positions, which is great. We, we had to cut a few things though. In order to get to this funding level, we had to move funding for four of our deputies from that side of the sheriff's into the jail. We had to count on some CCP money. So our partners with the, with CCP agreed to fund some, two extra positions in there. We are currently moving and funding one of our animal control officers into the jail. We cut one and a half of our extra help positions. We cut computer replacements. We cut our overtime funding in the jail in half just to make the recommended budget of $5,585,684. Jail health, we requested $815,111. That included two staff, an additional allocation for jail health. Instead, the recommended budget is $692,273. That's going to cut jail health expenses by $122,111. Every year, you hear me talk about jail health and how the costs continue to vary and increase because we don't always understand or predict what those costs are going to be. Metal, medical expenses traditionally over the last five years for us have increased. Just recently, we had one of our inmates fall, injure herself, required surgery down in Redding, then back up here. Those expenses are quite dramatic. We have been working with Health and Human Services on a CalAim project and looking at getting certain people into programs where we can get reimbursements. So we're very hopeful that we're going to be able to perhaps cut some of those costs and expenses in the future. But we're still kind of looking at that. The animal control situation with the shelter, we had originally requested $494,851. This is funded a combination with Health and Human Services, with realignment monies, and with general fund dollars. This year, the general fund, as you well know, that funding was cut to zero. So we are relying on Health and Human Services money. What's that, what does that look like? The CAO has recommended a tiered layoff process, beginning basically October 1st, continuing on through April 1st. My understanding is that there may be a proposal coming in from TASA that could mitigate this particular plan. So that's kind of open at this, at this time. Those programs that we are mandated to continue would be the rabies vaccination, rabies quarantine programs, and as well as licensing. So those types of things would continue. Code enforcement, as the CAO talked about before, over the last few years, there's been a lot of discussion with regard to the sheriff's office of continuing the code enforcement program as well as our, our regular duties as the criminal program, criminal side of code or criminal cannabis eradication. There's always a lot of discussion with regard to how that funding may be crossing over. And so in the spirit of transparency, working with the CAO and with community development, we agreed to move all of the code enforcement duties over to that office in order to make a clean delineation that the sheriff's office now would be enforcing criminal activities on cannabis rather than the, the civil side of it. However, as the CAO mentioned, there will be an MOU that will be coming in front of you with regard to some enforcement assistance on a, on a requested basis whenever we need to go with them to provide any type of additional assistance. So there is some money in this budget that does deal with some cleanup of that PERS types of, of overages and things of that nature. So that's why that money is in there and, and as well as that MOU. Now we get to the sheriff's budget, where we had originally requested $6,917,067. That was to fully fund our deputies, keep seven extra help staff, replace computers, repair things, server upgrades to our Spillman system, which is our CAD and our re, our report systems, meet contractual obligations, send a deputy to the academy to replace a, a ID card printer, which also prints our CCW cards, which last year Senate Bill 2 changed a lot of things dealing with concealed carry weapons permits. And so now we have to, instead of issuing a paper permit, we're now required to issue a card that looks like a driver's license. Well, the ID card printer that we have is on its last leg. And so that's one of the things that we included in here. And the cost of that is about $10,000. Yeah, they're not cheap. Anyway, our recommended budget for the CAO's budget here is $5,017,142, which is about $1.9 million less. So what that is going to show for us, and that part of that was that last million dollars that we had to cut, we're eliminating four civilian office positions. So that basically leaves three non-sworn staffer offices. Out of the, the three records tech positions in the front, we'll have one. And that position will be scheduled to be demoting down one step. In administration, we're not funding one of our admin positions, so that'll just leave two. And that's eliminating both of our extra help positions in the, in the admin office. So what does that look like for operations for the sheriff's admin office? Number one, it's going to reduce the hours that will be open to the public. We're currently, currently open for four days a week now. It could bring us down to two, maybe even one day a week, depending on availability of staff. Many of the walk-in appointments that we, we won't walk-in services that we currently have, we'll probably change that over to appointment only. And it's going to dramatically reduce the number of hours that we're going to be available to assist other county departments for different services. We're implementing more of the online services for the public for minor criminal types of reports, property crimes and things like that. They'll have an opportunity to fill those out online, submit those, and then they'll be followed up by a deputy whenever possible. We're going to be eliminating a replacement of computers. And as the CAO mentioned, or Craig may have mentioned it, but the, the Spillman server upgrade will be put off until next year after we pay off the system. So hopefully, it won't cause us any problems until then. So by moving, just to, to kind of recap, by moving some of the funding for deputies from the sheriff's side into the jail side, why are we kind of doing that? Well, by moving that funding to the jail to fill those positions there, it still gives me the opportunity when I can to move the, the deputies to perform patrol duties, whereas I could not take a correctional deputy and put them into the field on patrol. So that, that fills, that fills that void. It's, as I've mentioned many times before, it's a lot harder for me to recruit, hire, and train a patrol deputy than it is for a correctional deputy. So while it's not the best scenario, it, it's, it's something that I can do right now. It's, it's frustrating for me. It's frustrating for the public. I realize that. But in this budgetary situation, it's, it's what I can do right now. So it's ask me your questions because that's, that's all I got for you.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
I have, I have a few that, that originated from my community meetings. And so I'm just asking them on behalf of, of some of the folks that came to them and
Sure.
and I'm, I'm hoping that they're not they're just curiosities, I suppose. So thank you for entertaining them.
Absolutely.
It's, I, how, how full is our, is our jail in general? Like, we can hold how many inmates? And then where are we generally at in the? Like, we can hold how many inmates and then where are we generally at in the populace of that?
That's an excellent question. When this facility was built, it's a seventy-two bed facility.
Okay.
It has four pods built into it. We fluctuate anywhere from approximately thirty-five to forty-eight inmates at any time.
So with with that knowledge, I know that we send our youth out to another county to hold them. Is there any opportunity for us to bring in inmates from another county that's overloaded and then get paid for hosting them in in our jail? Is that even something that can be done?
That's another very good question. There is an opportunity for that. The issue there becomes, number one, do we want another county's worst of the worst central art facility?
Understood. Yes.
That's number one. The second thing is classification. Inmates are classified based upon their threat risk, if they're gang affiliation, if they have any medical issues and things of that nature. So it would depend on that. Those are types of things that we would have to consider whether or not we want to, number one, entertain that from another county. Currently, my understanding is not all the surrounding jails are full. Now, there was an issue with Shasta County. They weren't full, but they had a staffing issue, so they shut down a couple of floors in their facility. But that situation's been resolved.
Okay. And then is it my understanding, and correct me if if I'm wrong, that the moment an individual becomes an inmate in our in our jail and they fall, or maybe they have injury from, you know, prior experiences out on the street or what have you. Once they become in our custody, we're responsible for all of their health needs from the for the time that they're in custody, regardless of of how they got them or how long they've had them.
Yes.
So so people can have something maybe like long term, like diabetes or something that's, you know, can cause tremendous health problems. And if while they're in custody, they have some type of a an event or a flare up or a stroke or something like that, we are responsible for for every bit of that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes? Sheriff, I I think I know the answer, but I didn't hear it covered in in your presentation. The number of deputies that will still be funded that are fully allocated to, at least by intent, fully allocated to patrol is six. Is that correct? Looking for the answer.
I have to turn to my staff.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board Members. My name is Mary Chase. I'm the Business Manager for the Trinity County Sheriff's Office. We've implemented kind of a hybrid scenario between the patrol division and the jail facility currently because of our imminent need to provide staffing in the jail. So currently, all deputies are assigned to the jail facility. And then in the event that there is enough staff or somebody doesn't call in sick that shift, that deputy can go out onto the street and do patrol functions or follow up for internet reporting, those types of things. It's hard to predict how many times they'll be able to come out of the jail. So Susie and I worked together to kind of come up with kind of a ballpark figure. So we moved four deputy positions from the sheriff's side into the jail facility. But functionally and operationally, all six of the deputies are committed to the jail and can only come out when possible. So there's still some funding left in the sheriff's side for two additional deputies. But they are primarily in the jail facility. Fully funded on the sheriff's side, working full-time positions are eight point six. That includes the sheriff and the undersheriff.
So if the twenty-two positions in the jail are all full and nobody's out sick and all of the eight point six, including sheriff, undersheriff, I think I just heard.
Yes, sir.
Are filled, that theoretic, wonderful, perfect moment in time would have how many people available to cover thirty-two hundred square miles?
Let me look at the sheriff's notes.
Well, not not all the ones in the jail are deputies.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so you'd have correctional deputies that would not be available for patrol.
I believe there are twenty-one sworn allocations on the sheriff's side total. Including the sheriff and the undersheriff.
Some of those are
They're vacant.
And some of those are committed to the jail?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just I'm trying to get if perfectly, perfect world, every every position that's needed in the jail is filled and they're showing up. That leaves how many people, if fully funded and all showing up?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Including the sheriff and the undersheriff.
And the detective sergeant, the narcotics sergeant, the corporal. So those that would be the investigation staff.
Right. You're really getting to every, as you use the term that I I didn't stick in my head. What was it? You had twenty twenty-some people are sworn.
Sworn. Yes, that's anybody with a badge.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Carpenter, here's another follow-up.
Sorry, I forgot. Back to the the health issue and the healthcare issue inside the jail. When someone arrives, I'm only asking these questions because this is an exorbitant amount of money that we are spending in these scenarios. When a person arrives to to be checked in, how how do we understand what their health concerns that they may they may be coming in with? How do we determine what those are and when and when do we address that in order to not end up with something down the road that we were unaware of? How does that process work?
There's a medical evaluation that's done upon booking.
Who who does the deputy do that or do we have another person do that?
There's a medical evaluation checklist. And depending on what what is noticed on the form, then there's a doctor that is notified and and basically queried. This particular inmate indicates they're on these medications and this type of symptoms and so on and so forth. And then at that point, the doctor would indicate, okay, continue on these medications or this person needs to go to the E R or the hospital or or from that point on.
So in the in the current scenario, it's done by a person who's an intake person at the jail, but then is there anything changing in the budget that's going to change who does that or is that staying the same?
We've been working on trying to expand our medical systems on that. Trying to get additional healthcare in the jail.
Okay.
To improve on that system.
There are not any changes included in this budget.
Not on this budget.
Okay.
We've been working on trying to get additional funding to improve that.
Okay, I just was, I just flower grassed in how much money we spend in that area. I want everyone to be, yes, I want everyone to be well cared for, but
Absolutely. And like I said, those costs continue to go up. In fact, we had been entertaining a a new jail health, correctional healthcare provider. The initial estimate on that from the provider was one and a half million dollars a year.
Wow.
And obviously, we could not afford that.
I when I was, not to belabor this, but there are some programs that I have been have been made aware of through Naco where we can track and make sure that the the inmate is only receiving healthcare for what is necessary and not going backwards or forwards into what maybe they wish to have or what should have been taken care of at a different time. I don't know if any of those programs are, they're available, so maybe I'll try to find out where I got them and forward them to you.
You're welcome. Hear hear anything that you might have.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, just to for clarity, if someone comes in and they're onboard, we'll say, and say it's me and you asked me a list of questions physically, mentally. You know, where am I at? And as you go down that checklist, it appears that I need mental care. Do you call Novak right away? Is he there? Or do you, is that sheet scored and then evaluated by that? And then you you call a doctor in to say what needs to be done with that inmate?
Yeah, I'm not the expert on that, but my understanding is that on that sheet there is a, there's basically a score on it. And depending on on certain qualifications or certain certain information that's on there. They rate whether or not the individual needs immediate medical evaluation or whether the individual would be evaluated in the morning, depending on whether what time of day you come in. If it's during the day, you may see the physician immediately or you may get a call immediately. If it's at night, they'll evaluate whether or not, okay, do you need to be seen right now or is this something that waits till morning? Will you just be on observation until the morning or something like that? It also depends on whether or not you're on a specific medication. Are you on any types of drugs or or are you on alcohol or something like that? So then we have certain cells where you would be placed into for observation. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And also, if you have any behavioral health issues, then we would contact behavioral health.
Any other questions? I just wanted to make a statement that that is somewhat directed to to you and your team, but just generally as well. I think, first of all, I appreciate your creativity in trying to find a way to live within a very tight budget. Your your department is taking huge cuts out of this process. And it's hard when we think of one of the county's primary roles is health and safety. And and to know that we are, to some extent, hamstringing you and your team to do what you want to do on our behalf. And so we understand, we appreciate your willingness, and we're going to continue to try to find ways to help create a better future so that this isn't your reality forever. And with that, I just want to make a statement because I would actually like to find out if there's consensus for direction to staff. But when you hear some of this, where we're cutting people's jobs, people that are currently employed by the county will no longer be employed by the county. Services will be reduced in key areas in the company or in the organization. I really want to make sure that the people managing these departments understand the need to operate then within the money that they are provided. Because when someone comes back, and there's always some situations that completely out of control, a medical issue in the jail. One example, we can't anticipate, we can't predict some big amount. But to the extent it's manageable and controllable, we need to make sure that we're not using general funds for lack of effective management when we are taking people's jobs away. And and I just, to me, that what that translates into is the C A O has put in slightly more into the contingency fund this year because we cut everybody so tight. It's likely there will be some things that come up. But my input, and I would wonder if the board has the same input to our C A O, is that there will be a tough filter from board on giving those discretionary funds going forward because of how difficult the people that are running these departments are having to make these decisions right now. And I I just, it's a forward-looking thing, but it can be a powerful message for people to understand. Okay?
Just have one more comment if I might.
Yes.
That being, you know, when I was first elected, you know, there's there's a lot of shall I say, social media comments going on right now with regard to animal shelter issues. When I first got elected, one of the first things I did was I I pushed very hard for a brand-new animal control vehicle. And Craig was here for that. And and I pushed really hard because the the animal control vehicle that we had was extremely old. The box in the back didn't have air conditioning. So I pushed really hard for a brand-new vehicle and I was able to get that. Many of you will realize the fact that that I pushed really very, very hard for a second animal control officer. And we were able to get that. Last year, you remember me being here and advocating for, you know, when the when the budget got cut for the animal shelter. I I was here and I said, if we don't get additional funding, it's going to close in December. And that was a very real possibility, and we were able to get additional funding to run that through to the rest of the fiscal year. People need to understand that as the sheriff, I have very limited ability to to get additional funding and to into to to manage certain things. But I do what I can and I and I go forward when I can. And I I just I just wanted to publicly be able to put that out there for the people on social media who don't realize the things that that we do as the sheriff's office, and we do go to bat in that manner. And also with regard to grants, as was mentioned earlier, we do get grants in the sheriff's office. And when it comes to matching grants, you have to either match it with money or you match it with personnel time. We see Mary sitting up here, and she is the financial officer, the financial manager, the budget person for the sheriff's office. There's only one of her. And when we have to match time, it's matching her time. So when we get a grant, it calls for matching time. It's her time, and she also has to do payroll. She does budgeting, she does the grants, she does fleet management right now. I mean, because we don't have anybody else, there's only one of her. So when people say get another grant, they don't realize you can't just, I mean, there's time studies that have to go on. It's just, you you can't do that all the time. So I just wanted to put that out there. So thank you. I'm ready for comments.
Right. And thank you, Mary.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll take public comment in the room first.
Christine Edwards, I'm here to represent TASSA. And as you know, we've been coming here every meeting saying, don't close the shelter. We want to keep adoptions going. We don't want a high euthanasia rate. So right now, what we're going to do is the sheriff and the C A O came to our meeting on last Thursday. And we asked them, what can we do to save this shelter? What's going to cause, because we don't have the manpower. And I've talked to many other other humane societies, and I've talked to H A, Health and Human Services. I've been doing more research than you can believe, trying to figure out something. And right now, we don't have anyone to take it over. But we do have, we do make money. We do fund. TASSA has already spent over thirty-eight thousand dollars helping animal shelter right now. We do the volunt, we do the Spade and Nuda programs, we do the, we pay for merchandise down there. We pay for dogs that have been injured. These are all the things we've been paying, and as of right now, I think we're up to thirty-five thousand to this year. Well, when we asked the board, I'm not the board, but the C A O, what can we do? He gave us a figure. He gave us a figure of seventy thousand dollars. If we give him seventy thousand dollars, they would keep the shelter running and keep the A C O, keep the programs going, the adoptions, keeping it open for the public. So I we wrote up a proposal to give the county seventy thousand dollars as long as they keep the shelter running. And this will give us a little more time also to look into more avenues. You know, I've been talking with Mark at Haven Humane and just different people, just trying to get something to go, and it's not an easy, it's not an easy go, you guys. But we're trying. So with the seventy thousand, and then we'll look at this again next year, like maybe more people will give us more money. Maybe if we put out there until we can go to twenty-six, which I'm for Jill's plan of maybe doing it. You know, that when we went to that office or when we did that thing, you said twenty, certain amount, that boots doing and all that. For parcels, whatever. So so I wanted to hand, oh, I didn't know it was timed. So I want to hand out, and please remember, with the seventy thousand, we're still going to continue to help with the Spade and Nuda programs, or still continue all the things that TASSA does along with this. So you're looking over a hundred thousand just this year, and we haven't even finished the year. So I hope you guys to do that. And the grants, we will, we offered, we will write grants, we'll follow it up with them. We have grant writers. They really do work. Grants, it might, you call it a Band-Aid, but it honestly gives us some money. So more money is better than none. So, uh-oh. And then, other than that, I hope you consider it, I really do. And I hope you consider the grant writing, we've talked to the C A O about it. So um, and we'll give you money.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room?
First, I have the thirteen year old little girl who was attacked by the pack of dogs. I have a little quick statement for her, so I'm gonna run over that three minutes. Statement is, I am Stormy Ashby, the thirteen year old victim. Holy Lord, it went away. Of the recent dog attack in Hayfork. I would like to voice my concerns regarding these dogs and the incompetence of the owner and the risk of the other people's safety. These dogs have attacked people before, yet they were not properly dealt with. I believe that the county should have taken immediate action the first time it happened. The dogs are well known to be aggressive, not only to humans, but to other dogs. The owner of these dogs should have lost the right to them long before this. What if it would have been a smaller kid? I saw other families walking around town that day, and they should be able to do so feeling safe. I hope this is taken care of as soon as possible, so no one else needs to fear for their life like I did. Thank you. So that was from Stormy Ashby, the thirteen year old victim. My statement, today I come before you to speak to you regarding the animal shelter as a TASSA member. There have been, there has been a vote for a proposal to provide the county with seventy thousand dollars to enter into an M O U agreement to pay the rest of the shelter budget through the end of fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. This means the sheriff would not have to pay this amount of money. In preliminary talks with the C A O Tot Hill, he said it would include four employees, the two A C Os and the two extra help shelter workers. With that, I have serious concerns about the M O U. When the sheriff is already putting out false statements about A C O services and the budget crisis he is having, when he knows this agreement is on the table. Just yesterday, I read one of his responses to concerns about the pack of dogs that attacked the little girl in Hayfork. And I quote, "It is frustrating when pet owners refuse to take responsibility for their animals and let them roam. There is a way to pick up strays and hold them for a few days when we have room in the shelter. We don't have any room in our small facility at this time. If we did, like several years ago, the owner would have six days to claim their pet, then it would be humanely put to sleep. Currently, if you have an issue, please call and we will get to you when staffing allows. I'm really sorry, but we are in a budget crisis at this time, and I don't have the people I used to to respond." End quote. I'm sorry, but the info he provided about the animals being put down after six days years ago is false information. We didn't used to do this. The email was sent to, the emails that have been sent to him in response, along with several others, about the pack of dogs in Hayfork, belonged to a homeless person who has had several issues with animal control. Dogs, her dogs who attack have been taken from her in the past. She has no ability to care for these animals. She's, uh, multiple people have complained with little to no response. But the sheriff can complain budget issues when, at this point, his budget is still intact for the shelter. The shelter is still funded, and unless he pulls the plug on this, the shelter will be funded through June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. So why is he telling people that he doesn't have the officers to respond to a public safety issue in Hayfork with a pack of dogs who are attacking people in the middle of Hayfork in the middle of the day? Why aren't all of those dogs being put, being taken after they attacked a thirteen year old girl? This is very concerning.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room? Sure.
Sam Brinkley from Lewiston. I'll try to make this as quick as possible because I could probably sit up here and talk to you for hours about why we're in this budget shortfall. Uh, I just want to kind of respond to a couple of things on you, Sheriff. Uh, I don't believe you on when you say you're, where you get your funding for and how it's used because you lied to us on the funding for the dog that got shot on the raid that turned out to be, you took him to court, tried to charge him with all kinds of this and that, and then he's found guilty. What is that gonna, what is, where does that lead us? As far as animals, it was your team that shot the fucking dog. It was. And then you lied about funding. Uh, I would like to say that some of the things that I'm seeing from this reduced funding is, for example, with me and six of my neighbors met with the sheriff over an open operation meth bin, four doors down that has environmental complaints that you would not believe. Three, we told him the place was going to burn, they were burning trash at night, several complaints, six neighbors. Three days later, the thing burnt to the ground, just like I said. He is now still living out there, running off of a generator, still selling dope. One of these dope fiends abducted my fucking son and walked him to a trailer park for ice cream. One of the neighbors pointed out to the sheriff that he has thirty plants across the street. They had plenty of time to go bust his thirty meaningless plants, but that place can't get shut down. I'd also like to point out that where this funded, budget funding shortfall came from, I don't think people understand the cannabis program and the restrictions put on it. So I will explain it like this. Right now, the only permit issued in this county is for cultivation, one quarter acre. They're not issuing micro licenses that would allow you to package. They're not issuing transportation licenses, they're not issuing distro licenses, and we can go into that a little bit, and some of the corruption going on in that. Uh, so a, it, it, a good example would be if the mill could cut lumber, but they couldn't package it. They had to call the competition to come band and package it and load it on the truck. Then they couldn't transport it. They had to call their competition to come transport it. We have had exposed meetings between Jill and Rick, backdoor conversations when they're supposed to be defending this county's program to the very lawyer that is suing the county. There was an opinion given by a lawyer to all of the members that what she did was an illegal. That one has not been published. The published opinion by the lawyer that she so hard worked to get rid of behind closed doors, who now she has no talk of getting rid of the county council now that she decided what Jill did was not illegal. But there was another opinion of it. The reason they have a program at all is because if they don't have one, the state will take over. If you want to get some funding in the cannabis program and let the state take over, it is full of corruption and we're sick of it.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to speak on behalf of TASSA Sheriff Saxon. I, we know what you've done for our animal shelter. We know what you've done. You've done some amazing things for us. We're just asking that you guys take a look at our proposal, and we will be willing to put in the funds. That's what we do. And, you know, I, I have no problem with what you've done in the past. You've done some wonderful things. No, that's lies. So I, I, I hope that you'll look at the proposal at Trent too and and say, hey, this is reasonable. This, this could be done. We just want to keep it open until the next fiscal year. And during that time, we're going to find every way possible to fund the shelter, to keep it open for, and we're going to do the adoption process. We're going to do the spay and neuter program, which we've, we've knocked out a couple of huge cat colonies here that are causing wreaking havoc on the wildlife and just on the general health and safety of of Weaverville and Junction City and especially Douglas City, too. There's an ongoing problem. So I just hope you'll consider our proposal. And uh, we, maybe we can get together and talk about it as a group. And and one more question that has nothing to do with the shelter. It has to do with when you, someone goes into the jail with a preexisting medical condition. Can I do, can I ask a separate question? Am I allowed to do that?
Well, we're not, we don't get in, involved in back and forth, but you can still raise the thing that you would like to know about someday.
Yeah, because I'm finished with the animal shelter. So another day then?
No, you go ahead and say it. We just may not get an answer today because that's not the role.
You know, which could happen. I'm only seventy two, so you know, that's my grandma. So um, if I went in with a preexisting condition, do you ask if I have insurance of my own? I mean, like, I have Medicare, I have Teamsters. You don't do that, you don't consider there, and maybe they have personal insurance. That would shave a lot of money off the budget. Well, I think it's a good idea. And thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and thanks for your support through TASSA. Any other public comment in the room? About online? Okay.
Uh, Ben Kellogg?
Good afternoon again. I'm a bit speechless and flabbergasted at this point in time, and that doesn't happen very often. I'm trying to reconcile this word salad that we just got from the sheriff. So as far as reduction of record staff and admin, you know, what types of positions are these? Are they full time, half time, less than half time? My understanding is one of these positions, a person just left and on uh pregnancy leave. Uh, another person is also leaving in October on pregnancy leave. So we're not really cutting these positions, so to speak, is is my understanding. The vehicle that we're touting for the A C O, give it back. We're going to shave the, save the the animals. Let's give the vehicle back and get something different. The second A C O that the sheriff is touting that he got, well, he's back at the jail. So he's not even helping at the shelter. The sheriff's made comments in the media that there was nothing that he can do about the budget. That's not true. The buck stops with him. It's not on the, on the C A O. The C A O only makes recommendations. Though sheriff could realistically give the C A O the finger and do what he wants to do. The bar, the department head makes the decisions straight up. The board of supervisors, in the end, either approves the budget or they make corrections via rec, via reallocation. I'd really like to give my thoughts and prayers out to a young lady who was viciously mauled last week in Hayfork. She is lucky to be alive today. I and others told you this was going to happen. And unfortunately, it happened faster than we expected. It didn't wait until uh the shelter was closed. Perhaps if we had that second A C O down in Hayfork patrolling um and doing enforcement, this may not have happened. As far as the budget for the shelter, I'm still waiting to hear the numbers on how much we're actually saving by cutting services because we still have to have the lights on. So the sheriff's already stated that, you know, patrol and the jail staff, they're fully funded. Ninety nine percent of it, great news. The money's there in the budget. It's the fact that the sheriff's department has a retention problem at the jail. We can't hire anyone, and that's a big problem. People have left, and we're not able to fill those positions, which has caused the sheriff to bring all the patrol staff in. Fortunately, we're not a large city, and we haven't seen the ramifications of doing that at this point in time.
Thank you for your comment.
May I finish like ten more seconds?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Yep.
I have no additional raised hands.
Okay. Sheriff, thank you. Appreciate your work on our behalf. And Mary, I know, chugging the numbers, thank you.
Can I just say one thing? I just um really appreciate the sheriff's department coming in and working with our team. This was a horrible year for budget. As you have heard already through all of the departments, there isn't a department that is smiling about how they made off during this budget because everybody has taken a hit. Unfortunately, for the sheriff's departments, he's the largest departments in your budget, so he takes the largest hit, and it's felt out in the community. And so for that, I appreciate you working with us. I think a lot of what you took today from the comments that I know that we worked on are unwarranted. Some of them may be warranted. I don't know that. I just know and appreciate you and your staff working with us on getting to a budget that we could present today. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Who's next in the Susie alphabet?
Uh, we've got D O T.
Good afternoon. Panos Kokas, Department of Transportation. We have an excellent team at the D O T. And I like to describe that by telling you that we have a thirty two thousand square mile county that has many roads that, well, I don't know if I can call them roads. They used to be old mule trails, and we put some oil on it and we called them roads. They're not close to a two ninety nineties or any other county road. And those uh few road workers who get up in the morning to plow snow through that vast county are doing an excellent job with the old equipment that we have. Up to now, we could not operate some of them. Thank you to Mr. Tot Hill for speaking with CARB and were able to get permission to operate those until twenty twenty eight. The challenge that brings is that those piece of equipment, and they're older than me, literally speaking, and I'm pretty old. And we can't get parts for them, and they tend to break down. So there are times that we spend more time in the garage fixing the equipment than plowing roads or maintaining them. The other part is that we have about six hundred and ninety three miles of roads throughout the county. And with about twenty road workers, that's about thirty four miles per road worker. I work in other counties, there are only a thousand square miles versus thirty two hundred square miles with forty, fifty road workers, about ten miles per road worker versus the thirty four and a half that this, they are dispersed throughout the county, hard to get to. So our maintenance workers, they're heroes. They're doing an excellent job. And not just themselves, it's also the mechanics who have to take care of all that, all this old equipment. But yet, those people will not be able to function without the excellent administrative and accounting staff we have. Because we have some of the most difficult documents that we have to fill and complete in order to obtain our funding. And that's known as transportation funding. Uh, we spend a lot of time filling forms, answering questions, trying to get all the keys crossed and the eyes dotted in order for us to receive our funds. So I'm very, very thankful for all the work that they're doing. They are also heroes, may, maybe in the office, not outside. But there are heroes who keep our transportation system alive. Uh, we understand, people talk about how good would be the quality of life if we have more restaurants and more um theaters and so forth. But let's not have any roads during any time. Uh, see how can people survive? So this is something that we do very well. In addition to the roads, we also provide transit. We have four routes. One is going to Redding, the other to Willow Creek, a third going to Hayfork, and as needed, to Lewiston. And we also have people who drive in the severe conditions of snow, rain, and so forth. And another component is the airports. We're not funded through general fund. However, our revenues are going down. Why are they going down? Well, we get funded through gas taxes, and those are allocated based on the registered vehicles in the county and the maintained miles we have. Compared, compared to Ventura County, where they have half of the vehicles we have, I'm sorry, half of the roads that we have. However, eight hundred thousand people, they get ten times the amount of money we do for half of the roads. Why? Because it's based on the registered vehicles. So having said that, we're getting a little bit of money for the poor mule trails that we call roads to try to maintain them. In addition to that, Mother Nature is not that kind to us. We have storm damage from twenty seventeen, we're still trying to repair. Why does it take so long? First of all, we only have two and a half engineers. We brought a part time engineer to help us with the storm damage. In a typical situation, in another county, I had fourteen engineers working on things, and we still could not keep up. So our engineers are barely can keeping up with the demand. So our engineers are barely can keeping up with the demand of the paperwork. Now, if we try to take care of storm damage, we have to spend a lot of time on justification to FEMA, to federal highways and so forth, and environmental documents. So if you look at it from the type of work that the public sees, you're not out there constructing. Why aren't you? It's been four or five years. Well, because it's going to take me two, three years to get the funding approved, another five to six to get the environmental documents approved. No value added to the work, however, we have to go through it. On something that's an emergency, the road failed, half of it has failed. We're lucky enough to be repairing Ruth Zinnia Road under emergency conditions. Even that took us about six months to get the plans and start construction. So it's a long time. So going through the environmental process and getting the funding, that's about took at least 50% of the money. And then we're going to use a little bit of time to design and start construction. So as something is damaged, it's not that we don't want to do it. I'm ready to do it. I'm an engineer, I like to build things. But yet there are rules, regulations, regulatory agencies. They say regulatory agencies? There are some regulatory agencies out there who, I'm not going to say they don't want us to do the work, but they seem to get in the way. And yet we're able to do some of the work just to repair the storm damage. In addition to that, we have to maintain the roads, make sure the potholes are fixed, brushes removed, snow is cleared. I'd like to let you know that we bought a paving last year, a small paving and a crew put them to use last week and this week. And they're happily surprised that it can pave a small area or a large road. They did some work and the funding would be very, very helpful. You will see some of the photographs in my next report. The people are out there trying to get the work the best they can. We also try to apply for federal grants because that's where we get the funds. However, if our two engineers are busy trying to keep up with the storm damage and making sure that they file the application over and over and over to keep that project alive so we don't lose funding, we don't have the capacity to do the other work because it takes time. And yet we submitted an HCP application, it's a highway safety fund, federal funds, to do some restriping in some of the roads, provided it's funded because that's discretionary. There are a lot of grants out there, however, you need to have the time to have a good application, to have a lot of work in that application because it takes 300 to 400 hours to prepare the documents because they want to know all types of details. We do not have the people. And yet we try to do the best that we can so we can complete the work as needed. Our budget is about the same as it was last year. We plan to do some chip seal and paving next year, provided we can get some funds because we're using some of our maintenance fund to repair the damage on the Ruth Zinnia Road that if we don't repair this damage this year, there will be no road next year. And I'm happy to report that the contractor is doing great work. Now, this is advanced construction. We pay ahead of the time and we're going to be reimbursed in the next two, three, four years. Most of the time, when the funds are available through the federal government or the state, we complete the work. We get reimbursed with 60 to 90 days. This one, because the funds are not available, they're not allocated, we're going to be waiting in line to see when they're going to come in. However, they allow us to use our maintenance funds so the road is not going to be lost completely. Because if it was lost completely, there would be a four to five hour detour for round trip. And that's not safe for the people who live in that area, both for medical emergencies and also for fires or any other emergencies. So we try to make sure that we take care of the needs of our people, just like the service, just like the sheriff. We may not be code labeled as first responders, but in a big snowstorm, it's a road crews that they're trying to respond. In a road that has been damaged due to storms and there is a pile of earth or rocks, it's a road crews who go out there and respond to make sure everybody's safe and they can have normal lives. So we do not have all the stuff we need, 20 road workers, 35 miles of roads per worker. It's very, very low. Typically, it's about 10 to 12. We're three times that. Engineering wise, we need to have five to six people at least to get the work done, just the design, the applications for grants and so forth. We do not have it. We're able to get an engineer on retainer. It's a firm that's going to act as a county employee. But they cost about three to four times the cost of an employee because their overhead rate is rather high and their overhead rate includes profits, bonuses and so forth. So we have no other choice, but we'll try to do the best that we can. And like I said, we do not get any money from the general fund, but we'll try to do the best that we can as we can. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
I do have some.
Go ahead.
I'm curious, one of the things that I try to keep track of is the passing of the Secure Rural Schools Act and the PIL funding. How is that going to impact the department in the event that some of the road funding that comes through that isn't going to get to you? If Congress doesn't move?
You're absolutely correct. That's about 23 to 24% of our budget that's unrestricted and we can use it to plow snow, fix potholes and do any other work. There is a lot of, not a lot, half of the money that we get, it's RMR, meaning that you can fix existing damage like if it was a major construction project. However, it cannot be used for emergencies as often or for routine maintenance and so forth. That's going to affect us quite a bit. I spoke with Mr. Green, the superintendent, and he mentioned that he had some issues. And I wrote a letter to the leadership, to both Senator Schumer, McConnell, Johnson and Jeffries, outlining our concerns. And I sent that to Mr. Green along with sending directly to the Congress's staff people. I use my contacts through the National County Association of Engineers, NACE, which is related to NAECO. So that letter has gone out. I did not see the rest of the board, however, I can send you a copy. And along with that letter, I sent them some photographs. The letter was about a page and a half trying to set the stage that we are disadvantaged community and we really need those funds and that 70% of our county belongs to the federal government. So we do not have any tax revenue. So there is no way for the county to provide the services through the same areas that they're not taxed. And those areas that they're given some heartache when we're trying to get our construction done because of the environmental regulations that they are imposing on them. So hopefully that's going to go through. And the photographs that we send them are showing how routine are the jobs or the maintenance in Trinity County, which is not necessarily routine. It shows that we have to plow snow after we cut all the trees that they fell on the road. And we have to open a road because the hills slid down and we have to go through that. And we have to grade the road because the road looks like there was a low elevation bombing rate and we had potholes throughout. This is what we have to do.
Heidi, may I, on Secure Rural Schools, NAECO has been fully supportive of this as, you know, Jamie locally, I know he's talked with probably everybody in this room about it and more. And it's been very, very helpful and boisterous. Unfortunately, the whole bill is being caught up in the whole political process right now. As panels indicated, it would be a significant hit on us if we don't get the SRS funding. Now, if we don't get that, we do get a little bit more PIL because there is an offset there that has happened in the past. We don't want that to happen though, absolutely not. That is not what we want. We want this SRS to pass. I believe there's a strong possibility it will get caught up in some type of continuing resolution that will happen. Unfortunately, this has just happened cyclical time. I lived through it for 30 fiscal years in the government with threat of government shutdowns, with continuing resolutions. I think is what will happen is this will get caught up somehow in a continuing resolution bill. And we won't see the funds when we typically see the funds.
See later.
I believe at some point in time, when the actual appropriations bill does go through, because it will go through at some point in time. It'll just be at what, it'll just be at what level the other bigger departments are affected. And then this trailer part of it for SRS will follow. It'll just be when we see those funds and it's going to be our challenge for the remainder of this fiscal year. I hope I'm wrong. I hope it passes by the 30th of September and we don't go into some type of continuing resolution. But I'm not overly optimistic.
Yeah, I have a meeting next week with an update from NAECO, so I'll be sure to share that. I also want to say real quick, I am really, really powerfully impressed and grateful for the work that's being done through the, I believe it's the CWDG grant where they're removing, they're doing huge fuels reductions in Western County. And I think from a holistic approach, those greater fuels reductions along county roads is going to have a positive impact on our ability to not have to cut all of those trees out before we can go in and do restoration work after a storm event. So I'm really happy to see that happening. And also some of the work that the Forest Service is preparing to do down in Western County will also, I think, have a positive impact with the heavy fuels reduction on roadsides. And then I just want to say thank you from many of the people in my district who are very, very happy with the chip seal work that has been done in several of our communities and the pothole filling and just some of that general maintenance work and some of those extra things that have been accomplished. It's so nice when I go to the post office to hear about some good things in the midst of all of the other things. You get, you know, cornered with a gallon of milk in your hand. It's just great to hear some positive, you know, things going on. So thank you for that. That's something that impacts everybody when our roads are poor or when they're being addressed. So thank you for your efforts in that.
And just to follow up on it, we like to do a lot more maintenance. However, all that storm damage that we have, it isn't just the federal funds that they come through. There is also a local match. So we have to use some of those maintenance funds to have the local match. And because we're a small county and we don't have enough vehicles registered in the county, the amount of gas tax revenue we receive is very, very small. It's barely enough to take care of the regular maintenance because of the type of the roads we have. If you put on the top of it all the local match that we have to contribute to the storm damage, there is nothing left. I'm not trying to complain. I'm just trying to let you know that we like to do more. We don't have the resources. Equipment, it's old, it breaks down. We have 34 miles per road worker versus most places they have 10 to 12 old equipment. And the other part is materials is very expensive in Trinity County because we're far away from the source. So those are constraints, but we'll try to do the best that we can.
Well, I'm grateful for, I'm grateful for what you have been doing. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Any public comment?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate all the great work.
And last but not least, we have Treasure Tax Collector.
You mean the one who's getting all those funds for us to allocate?
Good afternoon. I'd like to start off by trying to talk everybody into switching it up next year. And so maybe we could start with me and go backwards. So just a thought, throw that out there for you. The budget book basically for our department has, you know, the highlights for our goals and objectives. Really, we wanted to kind of touch base and kind of let you know what type of impacts this would have for our department. As a service department, I feel like we feel these cuts fairly deeply. We work really well. We've got good relationships with the special district schools and other departments. And we try to do the best that we can, but one will for sure impact the other. I know Shannon referenced the three-legged stool that we've used in the past. That really is the truth because I have a taxpayer at my window that needs something and they need to go there and it's not available. It's just, it's a total that's affecting quite a few things. Basically, simply put, that's the, it's going to affect services. That's what that's going to boil down to. And in my realm, that ends up being like delayed payments and our processing as far as slower, you know, reduced services, hostile customers. They, you know, the consensus often is that they want things and they want it yesterday. And that's going to create a delay for us. We are able to do what we can do because of with our amazing team. They're wonderful. We can only do so much, there's only so much time in a day. We we are responsible for the bulk of the collections. And if we aren't able to do that, that is a direct impact for everyone. And a lot of what drives our office is the, you know, we have a lot of codes and things and such. And so if we don't follow some of those, then that restricts what we can and can't do because certain things have to be performed in a certain timeframe. But that was basically what we have unless you have any other questions for us.
Okay, thank you. Questions? No?
I have a question.
All right.
And this is just kind of like a high-level question, I guess. You mentioned that as other departments have to take cuts and close those windows that are open to the public and someone comes to you, but they need to run upstairs or go downstairs or whatever to be able to get those things done. Oh my goodness, that's going to be difficult. I, when I come to town, you know, I drive a long ways. The folks from Southern Trinity drive even farther. And to get here thinking you're going to get some errands done in the courthouse and then, you know, need to go to another window and that window's closed. During these difficult times, I'm curious and I'm sure you guys will do your best to coordinate that so that you're open kind of simultaneously so that when folks do come in, they'll be able to jump from one window to the next. But that is a challenge that my mind didn't think about until you brought that forward. So it's something we need to be really cautious of and reach, you know, reach out to do our best in that way, making sure people know. So thank you.
I run into that some now just with
Yeah, we do.
people that have come to one department thinking they need to, it needs to be taken care of there. And it actually is another department. And so we all do have a really good working relationship and we don't have a problem calling one another to make sure. So and also to hopefully not have to send them back upstairs or downstairs or whatever the case might be. So
Well, I appreciate that for the public. So yeah, these are, this is difficult. There's a lot of unforeseen challenges with the cuts. So thank you.
Thanks for that. That was a great suggestion because if we are going to have fewer hours, at least it'd be nice if they're aligned. So if I'm coming in, I can at least get to all three departments versus I have to come this day and these hours for one and yeah.
The hours that the courthouse currently has, the majority of us, that's the reasoning for the closing from one to two. That everyone within that courthouse can be open at the same time.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a question. So we heard earlier today, if I heard it right, in the cannabis presentation that while we had originally built our estimates about cannabis tax on 400 pounds per average 10,000 square foot operation, based on input from you, they were reducing it to 200. So can you tell us more about the sourcing of that data?
Absolutely. It comes directly from DCC. And so I have all the information. Some of the challenges that we faced before with estimating had to do with the fact that it's a newer industry. We're not aware of what's going to take place. So we, I was receiving information, it's part of the ordinance or the initiative that we received that information from METRIC. So basically it was like a massive data dump. And so it was a little more difficult to work with and there had to be a lot of, you know, sorting and things of that sort. But so now we have more usable information. So I have those numbers. And so what he was going off of, I'm like, I have half of the year. So keeping in mind that so for the January to June period, that's what's going to be due come November. Well, we already have, I have those numbers, so we know what they are. So I know for a fact that it's not 400 pounds. And so that's what I was relaying to him. So those numbers were not in line with what's being reported.
Okay, that's hopeful. Thank you. I think, you know, one of the things I think we talked about briefly, but I just I think, you know, one of the things I think we've talked about briefly, but I just had it here is I'm obviously laser focused on revenue opportunities. And so I look at this and I think back to raids that we had of farms that were in licensed and in the state and county program. And yet the federal agents who went there found thousands of plants not in the program. And so I question the validity of the data. I, I know it's your only data you have and it's coming through our official system. So, you know, what else can you do? But I just hope that with our cannabis code enforcement and just our normal program that we're making, capturing information about what we physically see on site, a part of our process that we're reporting back into the system because frankly, I don't trust what we're getting through the system with a very specific, small sampling. And we're not trying to say everybody is playing that same game, but clearly some are. And it was significant.
Yeah, let me comment on that just a little bit. There were seven properties that were involved with that. We have, and still are, working with DCC and those individual license holders to, to increase the operational understanding and processes of metrics, the system metrics itself. There are many different methodologies to account for the way and style an individual grows and, and, and cultivates their product. So there are some variances there. We are working to make sure that our staff and DCC's staff is under the same understanding of how it should be done. And then also conveying that information to the license holders who typically have a third party do their metrics for them because it's not a, I would say, user-friendly system to get into and, and understand and manipulate around. So I do think there's some, always areas for improvement there. I do think there was, between the, the numbers that were initially reported and what DCC initially thought and then what we've come to review during a license revocation and appeal process, that some of that has been reconciled, but there's still some, some room for improvement there.
So maybe not as.
That way.
As.
Not as drastic as originally proposed or originally portrayed. But, but still some, you know, some areas for improvement.
Okay, thank you. Well, and I, and again, I, I always have to be careful because it seems like every time I open my mouth about cannabis, that translates into being anti-cannabis and I am not. And I like, you know, I wish we didn't feel the need to, but I hear all these comments about the board and what the board has or hasn't done. And the board has made a number of sequential consensus votes in support of the cannabis program. And I think it's been an indication that we want this program. If people are doing it the right way and the right places, following all of our rules, all that kind of stuff, we want them to thrive. And, but we also want our piece. And I'm not trying to say that every cannabis cultivator is not playing by the rules by any stretch. And there's always some bad apples. But it just, this, this area just continues to be frustrating because it's such a moving target. And, you know, we just, I just want to make sure we're getting what we should be getting. And I understand, you know, you can only get what you get from the system and you're still working on implementation, some aspects of Acela and Drew doing the same thing. And hopefully that'll all get a lot better as we go forward.
It'll speed up the process for sure and efficiencies, but.
Okay, thanks for all you're doing. And that was it? Comment, I'm sorry.
I have no raised hands.
Thank you both. Yes.
I just would like to kind of, one of my favorite roles in life is, is being an auntie. And that is a kind of a caring capacity, you know, I care for people. And I know that morale is going to be hard hit as these budgets come out and people are, in some instances, taken down a step. And then other people may be losing their jobs. That's going to change environments within our departments. And I know that our department heads also have to battle their own, you know, fears and, and deal with, you know, the, the pressure of all of this. But I am going to ask all of you to just try to really pay attention to your emotional intelligence and help lift your staff and do little things for them that make them know that, that they're cared for and that they have value beyond a dollar amount and who they are as individuals. I always say your who is way more important than your do. And so just make sure that, that we're paying attention to that. And I know that you will as well, Trent, and our HR department will. But it's just going to be really important to make sure that we pay attention to the people who are doing the work that we need, especially in times like right now. So thank you.
So true. It seems like we need to give, well, it sounds like, but let me know, some direction about the proposal that we received today. With the Friends of the Library, you were able to receive it, discuss it, do a little bit of homework on it. You acknowledged you needed to do more. In this one, you're just barely getting to glance at it and I've read through it and there's a lot of details that would need to be worked out. But are you looking for us to say something like we did in the last one where it says, we're looking for you to maintain the budget at the same level of funding and to pursue this and see how much it can affect our ability to retain existing services? Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, does everybody agree?
Yes.
Okay. So that way you can move forward and I know that is not a Monday, you'll know all the answers to those questions. Or Tuesday, sorry.
Correct. We will, we will look at this and analyze this and then bring back at, for Tuesday's final budget adoption. The, the, the best we can do, the, the best effort, our, our recommendation at that time. Obviously, the, the MOUs and all the details won't be flushed out, but we will hopefully have enough information to bring forth a, a good recommendation by Tuesday next week for both the animal shelter and the library.
Okay. And then in addition to that, what you're.
Suzie wants to add, correct me, I'm sure.
Actually just going to ask for some clarification that the board's direction for the rest of the budget is to bring it forward as presented.
That's why I was just going to, yeah. Okay, so what you're, what I guess we need to check with the board is, at this point, we're trying to set ourselves up for budget approval on next Tuesday, the first, which has to be done by the second. And so this was our opportunity to work through all this, ask our questions and the direction to SAP we've given in a couple of situations, but we haven't really given it in the whole. And so you're looking for us to either say, for the rest of that we haven't discussed, move forward as presented for approval, or here are some things that we want to change. Correct. So does anybody have anything that they want to say, I want to see this different when we're looking at this next Tuesday?
Like to see different, but there's just not the opportunity.
And please keep in mind when you're giving that direction, if there's something you want to see different, we're also going to need to see like where you want us to take that funding from to put it.
Right.
To that other service because we don't have any excess. We've budgeted everything that we are aware of at this point in time.
Understood. So does anybody have anything that they would like to tweak or suggest be tweaked? Or are we just prepared to say, other than what we said about library and animal shelter, move forward as presented?
Fun.
Fine. Okay, thank you. I know this was a ton of work and not fun work. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we are adjourned.